The City of Grand Haven Special City Council Meeting of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two is hereby called to order. Would the clerk please call the rule?
McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Fritz?
Here.
McNally, oh, sorry. Lo?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
McNally?
Here.
We've got an agenda that's relatively short this evening. Do we need approval of the work session agenda?
No.
Then I'm gonna say, I'm gonna invite Ed Grafton of the Tri-Cities Board of Directors to come up and discuss the Noah Ferry Celebration.
All right.
Before you get started, Mr. Grafton, can I just, can I just thank you for the kind delivery of, the gift of the book on Coast Guard Cutter Escanaba to my home?
You're welcome.
And the kind note about my dad, which was really welcome. Thank you very much.
When I was a youngster, Bill chewed me up and down.
I can identify.
All young lawyers were. All young lawyers gotta taste your dad, it was good for him. He was a, he was an excellent lawyer. Anyway, thank you very much for having us here tonight, I appreciate that. Last year while I was doing some research on something else, I learned about the heroic life and death of Noah Ferry. I'd known that he was the third son of the Reverend William Montague Ferry, kind of the founder of Grand Haven, but I did not know that before the Civil War, he was sent to run the family's lumber operation on White Lake. As a consequence, the city of Montague claims him as much as we do. He's a big hero up there. So Noah was the boss of a company of lumberjacks when the Civil War broke out, and he was just twenty-nine years old. Now because his family was wealthy, Noah could have sat out the war while other people did the fighting and the dying. Instead, he chose to raise a volunteer cavalry regiment, the Fifth Michigan, to go to war as part of the Michigan Cavalry Brigade under the command of George Armstrong Custer. The Fifth Michigan fought at Gettysburg. On the third day of the battle, the Michigan Cavalry Brigade was locked in a desperate combat with Jeb Stuart's Confederate horsemen. While rallying his men against a rebel counterattack, Noah was shot in the head and killed. His death was part of what Abraham Lincoln would have called "the last true measure of devotion." Reverend Ferry and second son Tom, who eventually became a U.S. Senator, traveled to Gettysburg to retrieve Noah's body, and he's buried today in the Ferry family plot in Lake Forest. I really felt that a story like this needs to be remembered and celebrated, although recently at like a eightieth high school reunion, Mike Fritz told me he already knew about it. So the museum, the library, and the public schools have joined forces to present a series of programs this year, culminating with a public lecture by a Gettysburg expert, Mr. Eric Wittenberg, really a gem, to take place on Saturday, November twelfth. My colleagues on this project include Erica Layton, the executive director of the museum, who had to be somewhere else tonight. It's not that she doesn't love you, but she had a prior commitment before we got on the agenda. Jeanette Wyden, a genealogy specialist at the library. She's the best-looking member of the group tonight. And Tom Kuleo, a social studies teacher and a history nut at Grand Haven High School. Now Erica had to be at the other meeting, but she asked me to read a short statement, which I will, and then my two co-conspirators will address the council. This is from Erica. "The Tri-Cities Historic Museum is proud to be a partner with the Grand Haven High School, the Loudoun Library, and hopefully the Grand Haven Community Center to bring an exciting new program on Noah Ferry and the Civil War. From November seventh through January ninth of this year, the museum will feature two unique displays to showcase this important local event. The first is a community curator case featuring the collection of local reenactors who bring history to life through their participation in living history events." One of whom is right here, actually lives here. "The second display comes from the museum's own collection and showcases rare Noah Ferry artifacts and related materials some never before seen on display." I don't have time tonight, but reading some of the letters he wrote home are fascinating if you like history. Both displays will be free and designed to complement the other Noah Ferry programs. So that is the info from the museum proper. And now I'd like Jeanette to give you a peek at what the library has to say.
Hi, thank you. So the library will be helping with this collaboration by putting together some flyers and information that we'll be able to hand out to the community, highlighting all of the programs, exhibits, and events that will be taking place. We will also be coordinating a Lake Forest Cemetery tour, highlighting the nine veterans who served at Gettysburg that are buried in the cemetery. So we have not picked a date yet, that's tomorrow's meeting. So look forward to that.
Thank you.
And finally, Tom will tell you about what's probably the most exciting part of what's gonna go on, and that's at the high school.
No pressure there. Two, basically, we're gonna try to incorporate it into our Veterans Day Assembly that we do for the student body. But Ed has worked out where we're gonna have, hopefully, two showings out on one of the practice fields that we have behind the school of a reenactment of a Civil War Horse Cavalry unit that will come and do stuff during the day, and then the second one is gonna be after school and open to the public. So we will be trying to incorporate people from the community, obviously, to come out for that. The second part is during our assembly, we will be focusing on Noah Ferry, but also the concept of citizen soldiers, which is what his unit basically was, and we'll have speakers about that topic from the National Guard and other places that we'll be doing. So those are the main things we're doing. Hopefully, we'll also get the national speaker, we're still putting pressure on Ed to get that to happen on that school day too. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
So just to close here, I get to be the ask, of course. We'd like very much to have the city come on board as our fourth and final sponsor of the overall celebration. We really feel the community center is the best venue to hold the public lecture on Saturday, November twelfth. Mr. Wittenberg, he's on C-SPAN, Civil War people just love him to death, so we think he'll be a big draw, not just here, but from Grand Rapids. Shar, the community center, has told me that date is open, and the cost for a four-hour rental is three hundred and fifty dollars. At least, I think, is what she told me. So we hope the committee, as a cosponsor, will either waive the rent or give us a break on the price. And I invite you to consider that whenever it's appropriate, but we're just glad to be able to talk about this tonight. Any questions for me?
Could I have the date again, please?
The community center would be Saturday, November twelfth, so the day after Veterans Day. The big Veterans Day show will be at the high school, the Michigan Cavalry Brigade, which is one of the premier Civil War reenactor groups in the whole nation. They're jazzed to come over here because, of course, they're based on the cavalry units that Noah was part of, and he's a big hero to them, so they can't wait to come over here and win the Civil War again.
Nice. So basically, I think we will discuss that at a later date. Have you filled out an application with Shar for, that'll come through to us then in normal course of business?
And she told me I would fill out paperwork number two after I talked to you folks.
Okay, that sounds fine.
But we're just, we really wanna be able to show a locked-in cooperation between the city, the high school, the museum, the library. I'm a big believer that there'll be a lot more of those sorts of programs in future years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your Honor, typically, a community center rental would not be presented to the city council, but a waiver request would be.
Right, I understood that part. So the question is, the waiver request needs to come through in a formal way, Pat? Or we can consider it this evening?
You could ask to add it to the agenda tonight, or we could place it on a coming agenda.
Okay.
If I had my druthers, I'd ask you to add it, 'cause then we don't have to write a big, long memo and get into a lot of...
Somebody else would have to.
Yeah, so it's up to you if you'd like us to write it up and review everything and give you a report, or if you'd like to add it tonight.
I think we got plenty of information to make a judgment about that. Does anybody have a reservation about adding it to the agenda?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, I think we're good with adding it to the agenda. We'll try to get a motion to that effect as we open the regular meeting, is that...
Great.
Okay, have we got anything else, Pat, for the work session?
Not for the work session, Your Honor.
All right, the work session is adjourned. Everybody can relax for about twenty minutes, eighteen minutes, and then we will convene the regular city council meeting.
Attention, please. Thank you. I know there's a large group waiting outside and I appreciate that you're there. I'm going to ask everybody to be on their best behavior this evening and participate in civil discourse in our small-town government. And thank you for coming. The regular city council meeting of the City of Grand Haven of June twentieth, twenty twenty-two is hereby called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Low?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
McNally?
Here. The invocation this evening is going to be delivered by Reverend Joe O'Neill of the Nortonville Gospel Chapel of Spring Lake. I'm going to ask everyone to rise and join us for the invocation and pledge of allegiance afterward. Thank you for coming, Reverend.
Good evening, everybody. Want to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth and a late happy Father's Day. How many dads do we have in here? Raise your hand. Late happy Father's Day to you. You know, as men who lead our families, we have a responsibility that to do what is right, no matter how the kids feel about it. And all moms and dads know about that. God has blessed my wife Elaine and I with six kids and sixteen grandkids. And we're thankful to God for that. And the city council has a great responsibility tonight to do things that are right, not just in the eyes of men, but in the eyes of God. And we need God's help to make those decisions that are pleasing to Him. So I encourage you to pray with me as we ask God for wisdom on the meeting tonight. Father in heaven, you alone are great, you alone are holy, you alone are true. And we're asking for us here tonight that we can make decisions and talk in a way that is pleasing to you. Help us not to make decisions that are based on finances alone or tax alone. Help us to make decisions that we can be proud of when the day we stand in your presence and give an account of our lives, as you have said that every one of us will. Help us as we are parents and also community members and a council. We pray for your blessing upon our state and our governor, also upon President Biden and our Supreme Court. We ask you, Lord, that the decisions that the Supreme Court will make here in the next couple of weeks will please you and give you glory. Help this council tonight. We need your wisdom. Help us to watch what we say because you tell us that every idle word that we speak, we will be held accountable for. We need your help, Lord. Humble ourselves in your presence and ask your blessing on this meeting. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to start this evening with reappointments to boards and commissions, which is attachment A. Ashley, would you please read the names of the appointees, reappointees? Let's start with those first.
Okay. This is to reappoint David Davis to the Audit Review Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. To appoint Keith Colson to the Human Relations Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. To appoint Emily Nail to the Human Relations Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. To appoint Wesley McGee to the Human Relations Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And to appoint Amy Kozinecki to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
No, moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just want to say thank you for wanting to do it again for us. I appreciate it very much.
I agree that the volunteers are the strength of this community and these are some mighty fine ones. So, thank you. Ashley, please call the roll.
Fritz?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. We're moving on to nominations for boards and commissions. Ashley, would you read those as well?
This is to appoint Dennis Scott to the Cemetery Board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. To appoint Edward Watkins to the Cemetery Board, term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. To appoint Rhonda Klein to the Community Land Trust, term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. To appoint Chad Fisk to the Historic Conservation District Commission, term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. To appoint Wendy Noth to the Historic Conservation District Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. To appoint Patrick Quah to the Historic Commission, Historic Conservation District Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And to appoint Linda Rosima to the Historic Conservation District Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
No, moved.
Is there support?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, if you could, there just wasn't, I don't know Ms. Noth, and there wasn't really much detail about her educational experience or background or any of that, those types of items like there were for the others. Can you kind of explain a little bit about your recommendation for appointment of her?
Of course. I first interviewed Wendy Noth when, actually, I think she says it, Knoth, but I'm not sure.
My apologies.
No, I'm not entirely sure, Ryan, I'm going to say. But when I was doing planning commission interviews last year and she had actually applied for Cemetery Board or Planning Commission. And what I learned was she had a great interest in historic buildings and actually lives in the William Ferry House on Lafayette, which is, and described herself as caretaker of that house. So when I was looking to put in some strong people to the Historic Conservation District Commission, I chose, I asked, actually asked her whether she would consider shifting over there instead of holding off her planning commission. Or, and I said Cemetery Board, there's also possibility, but she was interested in this. I don't think she has a lot of advanced education, but I think she has significant interest in and experience with historic buildings. So that's why I picked her.
Thank you.
Okay, bring up anything for anybody else? Could the clerk please call the roll?
Cummins?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay, I don't think we have, do we have oaths on appointments tonight, Ashley? Do we know?
Nope. They will schedule a time with Anna to come.
Yes, I know this bunch, but how about last meeting's bunch?
I believe, I don't know.
Okay, we're going to follow up on those. And I'll ask, I'll talk to Anna about it. Thank you. All right, we're at the point where we would, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent and regular agendas. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's support?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Uh, yep.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask to add the Noah Ferry presentation request on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. At the Grand Haven Community Center, they've made a request to waive the fees for the use of the facility that, you'd like to add that.
To the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda as item Q.
Pardon?
Item Q on the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Yes. Anybody else? Problems? I think yes, Pat. Thank you for reminding me. Okay. No further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to remove item thirteen A from, from, from new business. It is, I've been, and I'll let Ron talk, I'm not going to steal his thunder, but Ron has said that this council does not have the legal authority to remove a councilperson. And based on that, I see absolutely no reason why we're taking up that, that, that resolution. And it should be withdrawn.
Does anybody second it? Second, next we can discuss. Okay. Motion by McLaughlin, second by Cummins. I'm happy to discuss it here.
Well, I, it sounds like council member McLaughlin is raising some questions from our city attorney on whether or not we have the legal ability to consider this motion this evening. And I guess I'd also like to hear from him on whether or not we're really equipped to provide, you know, due process related to the mayor's motion, you know, in the way that, that we would, you know, to make such a decision, so.
I have given an opinion to the mayor and to the manager that, in my opinion, the charter does not clearly give the council the authority to make that kind of determination. And because we are, as a local unit of government, we have no original power. We have the power that state law or our charter gives us. I drew a distinction between the Witherall, Jerry Witherall situation and this situation. I thought the Jerry Witherall situation was a set of objective facts. I do not think this is a set of objective facts. There have been a lot of court cases about what constitutes residency and what does not constitute residency. And so therefore, I, I think the traditional route has been a quo warranto act, which is Latin for by whose authority are you, the person in question, sitting in this chair? And those kinds of actions go to circuit court. So as my opinion to the mayor and to the manager was, as a matter of legal interpretation, I don't believe council has the authority to do this. If council were to proceed with it, an argument could be made from an implication, but if council were to do it, it would take essentially a trial, a due process hearing. It could not, I would absolutely not recommend that it be done by, by recommendation, by resolution, by a motion. It would have to be essentially a trial where there was examination of witnesses, production of documents and evidence, cross-examination of witnesses. I don't think the council is necessarily equipped to handle something like that. And I think it would be a very messy and painful and harmful experience, frankly. So from a practical standpoint and from a legal standpoint, my opinion is that city council should not exercise that authority on its own.
Ron, can I ask a couple of questions? Yes. Do you think, and I'm, and I'm asking them openly, but does this council have any authority to police itself? I mean, what is, short of a, short of a quo warranto action, and maybe the answer is nothing, but short of a quo, quo warranto action, if a member of this council becomes aware of facts that lead them to believe another member of council is not eligible to sit on this council, all right? Obviously, you could report it to the city manager, but the city manager works for council. You could report it to the city attorney, who also more or less works for council. There is no really clear pathway for any of this to be addressed. And it, so it's your opinion that, that, and how do we get that information to the public? I mean, it seems to me, and I, and I will tell you that I have been approached for months by different people in the community, some of whom I know, some of whom I don't know, saying council member Low doesn't live in town and shouldn't be sitting on city council. So if that is, if that comes to me, what do I do with it? to me, what do I do with it? Uh, without some kind of inquiry? I mean, the police won't investigate it. Uh, what is the right path?
Well, certainly it is a fair subject of discussion, uh, for a city council to have at any time. Um, it is, um, fair to ask questions. I'm just saying that when we discuss and address the issue, I don't think city council has the authority to remove. I don't think city council would be precluded from requesting an opinion from the attorney general. Um, and, and I know that there can be steps following that going to court. Um, so I think that there are options, um, that would involve addressing the issue without city council exercising the ultimate decision-making authority.
Okay, so to get it on the agenda, to discuss, what would a motion say? What should I have done? I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, it seems like there is an obligation on behalf of a council member to, um, raise this issue with the fellow council, uh, with the other council members, and we can't do that outside of a public meeting, right? That, I mean, it's not like I could walk to other council members and say, listen, this is a problem.
Correct.
So if you don't go to, um, outside the open meetings act, it really has to be discussed, if at all, at a meeting just like this.
Correct.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a good question on that?
Sure.
Um, there is nothing preventing an individual, this information came to the mayor, from coming to me, the person that's being accused of this, and asking them about it, correct? Because that's not a quorum, it's two members of council. I've never been approached. The first time I saw any of these accusations was when it was posted on a public agenda. So I'd like to understand how appropriate that is, or if there was a procedure for council where there was concern about any one of these council members, would we not have the courtesy to go to them first and ask them?
Well, my answer's gonna be yes and yes. Um, I think that yes, it is a fair matter to be discussed as a full council about, we think we have this situation, uh, what, what should we do about it? Uh, I think also it would be appropriate, it would be legal under the open meetings act for someone to ask the particular council member in question. That would not be a quorum, going round, round robbing each council member, council member to council member to build up a consensus, a coalition, whatever. That would be a violation of the open meetings act. So, um, either one are legitimate options.
Understood. And, and I exercised a legitimate option, but apparently put it on in the wrong way. So are we free at this point to discuss this matter?
I want to be clear about this. I mean, when it, the, the agenda item is not an illegal item. It, I'm, it's a fair thing to discuss, but when you discuss it, you're gonna get my opinion saying, I don't think you have the authority to do that. That doesn't mean you can't discuss it.
Right.
Doesn't mean it shouldn't be on the agenda. It just means that's what I'm going to recommend to you when you do discuss it.
Okay.
Uh, or you could take off the recommended resolution and say, I want to discuss a residency issue of a council member. That would be a fair agenda item.
Say it again. Sorry.
Instead of having a, an agenda item that basically calls for a resolution of action, there could be an agenda item that says discussion of residency of council member to ask the council member in question, to discuss it among the other council members about what should be done, if anything, if we think this is true. Uh, that's, those are fair discussion items for the council to have.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Um, my question would be, um, before that kind of a discussion happened, do I not have a right to have an attorney present, given the gravity of the allegations that have been, um, placed against me? Or is it okay to have that kind of an open discussion? Maybe it's okay, maybe it's just not very ethical.
You know, I, I answer from what the law says. I mean, it's not like, you're not charged with a crime, uh, to my knowledge. Uh, this is a question of eligibility for city council position. Um, it's not, there isn't a legal right to have an attorney.
Excuse me, Ron, that wasn't the only thing that was in the allegations. It wasn't just about residency. There were some very grave allegations of, of voter fraud, of, um, of, against my husband as well, because there was perjury and falsification of documents on our tax documents. Um, there were quite a few, there were criminal allegations on that, and I just don't want this city council, uh, to get distracted on. I'd like to see that go through an appropriate and fair process in a court of law as opposed to in a city council meeting. Um, but again, I'm just, I am asking your opinion and yet I'm a little bit concerned about what I'm
No, I understand.
Hearing here.
None of those issues are remotely in front of you. You're not gonna make decisions on, on those kinds of things. Uh, you're gonna make decisions on, you're going to discuss and consider whether you have authority to talk about eligibility for a city office. You're not gonna make a decision about voter fraud or tax fraud or anything like that. At least, with not, not without my objection. Uh, so I don't think you'll, you'll be doing that. From a legal standpoint, do you have a right to have an attorney? No. Uh, could you say, before you have this discussion, or before I answer anything you raise in the discussion, I'd like a chance to consult with my attorney? That's a fair response by you. Um, so those are things to talk about, but there's not an absolute right, uh, to have an attorney before the issue's brought up to council.
So, I guess I would like to discuss why I put this on if we're going to talk about removing it. And is that appropriate?
Well, at this point, the, I mean, the, the issue before us is approving the agenda. The motion was to approve the agenda, then there was a motion to amend.
There's a motion to amend and remove the item, and that's under discussion.
Right.
And it seems like before we remove the item, I should have an opportunity to explain why I put it on the agenda.
And, and you are the chair of the meeting, and so I'm, I would defer to you on that.
Okay, here's what I got. "For months since our November election, local citizens have approached me with concerns that Karen Low does not live in Grand Haven and should not therefore hold office on our city council. I know that Mrs. Low has two homes. She told me so when we met. I believed her when she told me her Highland Park cottage was where she principally lived, and I helped her run for office. There's not really a simple mechanism in a small town to investigate a serious complaint about government integrity at this level, short of asking a police officer or private detective to investigate where Mrs. Low lays her head at night, which I certainly didn't have either the inclination or authority to do. I couldn't, I could think of few ways to approach this matter that might clarify the facts. If the citizens' concerns were valid, Mrs. Low holds an office for which she is not eligible. She then displaced a candidate in last November's election who should be sitting at this bench. She would be participating in law and policy decisions for our city without lawful authority. If the citizens' beliefs, and this is multiple citizens, were mistake, mistaken, these rumors were eroding confidence in our government without a basis. As a city, we needed to address the issue. I took a look at public records posted on our water treatment plant website. After looking at monthly water consumption, I requested further more detailed records from the Department of Public Works. These records are available to every citizen. In Karen Low's first two hundred days in office, city utility records show a total of ninety-four gallons of water were consumed at ninety-two Poplar Ridge. That's in two hundred days in office, the historic cottage she claims as her legal residence. An examination of monthly water consumption over multiple years showed the bell-shaped curve you would expect of cottage occupancy, with no consumption in December, January, February, or March, little consumption in April, May, October, and November, and heavy consumption in June, July, August, and September. Water use was significantly less in twenty twenty-one while she held office than in prior years. Water use in twenty twenty-two through the end of May was minimal. Our city attorney has previously advised that a vacation of office is automatically triggered when any of the events enumerated in the charter, section four ten, occurs. In this case, relevant charter provision reads as follows: Declaring vacancies in office causes enumerated. A city office shall become vacant upon the occurrence of any of the following events, ceasing to be an inhabitant of the city. Michigan law defines the word inhabitant as a resident of the city, township, village, district, or county. Michigan election law defines the term residence as that place at which a person habitually sleeps, keeps his or her personal effects, and has a regular place of lodging. It goes on to say, if a person has more than one residence, that place at which the person resides the greater part of the time shall be his or her official residence. Your right to vote, to hold office, and to claim a homestead exemption on your property tax all depend upon your official residence. I believe the city water records, standing alone, establish Mrs. Low has not been a resident of the Poplar Ridge Cottage or an inhabitant of the city of Grand Haven since her election. Regardless of her claims, she does not reside the greater part of the time in her historic cottage in Highland Park. She has spent little time there except in summer for the past three years. In a previous case involving city treasurer Jerry Witherall, this council declared his office on the Board of Light and Power had been vacated. Due to grave illness, Jerry was unable to perform his duties and was absent from the city for a period in excess of sixty days without prior city council approval. One of the other causes, not related here, for vacating office. Jerry admitted all the underlying facts and then stated his desire to compete, complete his BLP term. This council, led by council member Cummins, insisted Jerry's BLP office had been automatically vacated under the terms of the charter. We then unanimously reappointed him to complete his term. In this case, we have no such admission of the underlying facts, and we don't have a clear process by which to evaluate any facts brought before us. American government at every level relies upon honesty from its participants. Recent national events have shown this is a critical vulnerability, and the turmoil that results from dishonesty in government is harmful, harmful to our democracy and to the communities governed by it. The city attorney has given us guidance in this case and distinguished the Witherall case. He states the standard in the Witherall case, absence from the city for sixty days, is much clearer and less nuanced than the standard in this case, inhabitancy of the city. He does not support automatic vacation, and I understand why, but I still think it's appropriate in this case. Our law, despite what many say, is intended to allow common sense, logical inferences, rational thought, and the public good to prevail. Section four ten of our charter, past legal advice from the city attorney, and the precedent sent only a few weeks ago by this very council, are quite clear. If the requisite condition is met, the city office is vacated automatically. So the only real question to me is, is the condition, ceasing to be an inhabitant of the city, met in Karen Low's case? If we choose to apply a standard in which we deem the requisite condition met only if it's, if it is admitted by the office holder, frankly, we reward liars. These city water records were broken down, are broken down monthly. They are also broken down daily. Logic, rational thought, and the laws of fluid dynamics tell us that unless the Lows occupied this cottage for months without flushing a toilet, taking a shower, or washing dishes, these records establish that when the cottage was, established when the cottage was and was not occupied. They further support a conclusion that ninety-two Poplar Ridge was largely unoccupied between mid-September twenty twenty-one and late May twenty twenty-two, and that in that time, if she ever was one, Mrs. Low ceased to be an inhabitant of the city. That is my position. Um, I understand it may not be shared, uh, and, uh, I'm okay with moving forward with whatever this council decides.
Actually, I'd like to, you know, counter that with a statement of why I do think this needs to be removed, since you spent that time. Is that permissible?
Do you recognize the council person it is?
I do.
I'd like to read two things to you. Um, weekend has been a long weekend for me. Um, first, I'd like to, um, I've retained counsel to, um, continue to address these allegations from the mayor so that I can focus on the work of the city. But I'd like to read the letter that was delivered to city council and our city attorney, um, by my attorney. "I'm writing you, uh, to you today in capacity as city attorney for Grand Haven. City council member Karen Low retained me over the weekend to represent her in connection with Mayor Catherine McNally's allegations that Low is not a legal resident of the city and therefore ineligible, allegedly ineligible to hold her elected office. I would ask that you share this communication with all members of the Grand Haven City Council prior to tonight's meeting." And she reads the, the, or, Mayor McNally included in her letter, in addition, making allegations that council member Low is not a city resident as attachment D, which she largely read, adding it to the agenda this past Thursday night, Friday. First, it's important to note that council member Low adamantly denies Mayor McNally's claims that Low is not a resident of the city of Grand Haven, and her insinuation that council member Low is absent from the city for sixty days or more, both claims are false. The timing of this suggests that the apparent reason for the mayor to raise this issue now, despite her lengthy attempt to explain away why she did not raise it months ago, looks to be council member Low's recent opposition to the mayor's position on the marijuana ordinance. It has unfortunately come to Ms. Low's attention that apparently a few individuals associated with the mayor have been going to extreme measures in trying to track Ms. Low's time spent at her residence in the city and the other property she owns in Grand Haven Township. This has included trespassing onto Ms. Low's city home, peering into her windows, watching her parking at home, following her home from city council meetings, and questioning her neighbors. As you might imagine, this has been extremely unsettling and distressing to Ms. Low. It is telling that none of this tracker information has been disclosed or presented as evidence by the mayor, and that the mayor is relying solely on water usage information that has been available for some time. The fact is that Ms. Low has multiple forms of evidence of residing at her city home despite having purchased another property in twenty nineteen, a short distance away in Grand Haven Township, like witnesses to her personal presence, utility usage, property tax payment, receipt of mail, and registration for voting. Ms. Low also disputes the accuracy of the mayor's claims about what Ms. Low told her. Second, since Mayor McNally's proposed resolution relies on section four dot one zero five of the charter, it is important to note that the city charter does not provide a mechanism for the council itself to make a factual determination about residency and then remove one of its members. That section reads, "A city office shall become vacant upon the occurrence of any of the following events, ceasing to be an inhabitant of the city." The Jerry Witherall situation recently, as the mayor claims, is not analogous. There was no factual dispute about Mr. Witherall's long-term continued absence from the city and failure to attend the Board of Light and Power meetings. To the contrary, there is significant dispute here about facts. In that instance, a quo warranto action or other claim for declaratory relief from the circuit court appears to be the only clear mechanism for adjudicating the issue. Third, even if council were authorized by the charter to remove one of its own members upon proof of non-residency, Ms. Low would be entitled to due process in such a hearing. Having notice of one business day of the mayor's resolution, resolution, which is what Ms. Low has had so far, would not satisfy due process. In addition, council would be required to hold an evidentiary hearing, this is where both the city attorney and my attorney apparently agree, where both sides were allowed to address the allegation, present evidence, and present a legal argument based on the evidence received. Even if sufficient notice had been given, which it was not, such a hearing is not an exercise that council is adequately prepared to undertake. Fourth, the mayor has taken the extreme step of suggesting that Ms. Low's holding of the office of council member could be a criminal offense, and made reference to referring the office of council member could be a criminal offense, and made reference to referring the matter to the Attorney General. This is a ludicrous suggestion, given all the conflicting evidence to the mayor's chart of water usage that Ms. Lowe is a resident of the city. There is no authority that the mayor has cited or that we can locate in, you know, about water usage as the definitive evidence of residency. However, the mayor's suggestion of referral for investigation puts my client at risk of criminal prosecution and entitles her to the presence of and consultation with an attorney during such a hearing. Because of a prior commitment for another client, I am unable to attend tonight's council meeting. in addition to retaining the attorney, I also obtained another opinion from a expert in Michigan election law. And so I'll read this, and I can, I can provide copies of it. Chris Troublecock from Clark Hill. Ms. Lowe, thank you for contacting me to discuss the recent questions that have been raised regarding your qualifications to continue to serve as a council member for the city of Grand Haven based on your ownership of a second residential property outside the city limits. My understanding is that the mayor of Grand Haven has asserted that your temporary occupancy at your second property located in Grand Haven Township disqualifies you from holding office because your residence is no longer in the city limits. The mayor's assertion is based on her review of your water usage records at your primary address. As discussed below, there is simply no merit to this challenge, and there is no water usage standard, standard under Michigan law. Grand Haven City Charter provides three requirements that a person must possess to be qualified for elective office. One, over 21 years old, registered. Two, registered to vote for the city. Three, reside in the city for at least six months prior to the election appointment. City Charter 4.2, under the Michigan Home Rule City Act, no provision of any city charter shall conflict or contravene the provisions of any general law of the state. The charter does not define the term reside or residence. As such, the charter is subject to the definition as stated in Michigan election law. Section 11 of Michigan election law, MCL 168.111, provides that a person resides at a place at which a person habitually sleeps, keeps his or her personal effects, and has a regular place of lodging. That statute added is, if a person has more than one residence, that place where a person resides the greater part of the time. The statutory definition does not affect existing judicial interpretation of the term residence. In your case, I understand that your primary residence is located at 92 Poplar Ridge within the city of Grand Haven. This is where you reside with your husband. It is where you're registered to vote. It's used for your tax returns. It is your primary residence for property taxes within the state of Michigan. While you also own a residence outside of the city of Grand Haven, you and your husband spend the majority of your time in the Poplar Ridge home. The majority of your personal belongings are maintained at that location, and whenever you have the occasion to leave this location, your intent is to return to the home on Poplar Ridge. Under any interpretation of Michigan law, my opinion is that Poplar Ridge home is your residence for all intensive purposes under the charter and Michigan election law. The fact that the Poplar Ridge home is not winterized, or you temporarily stay at another location in winter months, does not change this conclusion. For over 100 years, Michigan law has recognized that a temporary absence of a person or his family through extending over a series of years does not necessarily, with regard to his intentions, make him lose his residence or deprive him of his rights as an elector. And he cites several of case law. Again, my understanding is that you consider Poplar Ridge your home residence. This is where your personal belongings are, where you register vote. More importantly, under Michigan law, Poplar Ridge is where you and your husband intend to return and remain after any period of absence. There are simply no facts or law that would result in a different conclusion than that Poplar Ridge is your residence for purposes of being qualified to hold elective office in the charter. I had a second opinion. I have my full attorney to represent me so that I can continue to focus on the matters of the city. But I would just argue that this is not, as the city attorney, as my attorney have indicated, something that should be adjudicated here.
I'm going to respond by saying that the opinion you read regarding the election expert relies upon your assertion to him that you spent, you spend the majority of your time at the Poplar Ridge Cottage. I think the water records demonstrate that's simply not true.
Point of order, aren't we talking about just the rationale for why or why not this should be removed from this agenda? We're not debating the case. I'm just saying why I believe it should be not removed and not adjudicated here for the record.
I think that for the record, you stated the merits of your case, and I'm responding. But I think we can move on. Ryan, got anything?
Do we need to vote?
Nope. There's more discussion, right? Potential for more discussion.
Yeah, I think what we're hearing from our city attorney is that we're not equipped to provide the due process that's necessary, I don't, to decide such a matter, and so I don't know why we would have any further discussion on this because we're not in a position to decide it. And, and so at this point, or take the action that's been recommended this evening. So I think that this agenda item needs to be removed from our agenda this evening.
Kevin?
Mike?
I think we need a discussion on the residency, as, as a lawyer has put it to us. I think people need to have an answer. I think we should have a discussion amongst all of us on this, on this whole thing.
Here and now?
Well, it would be most appropriate, everybody's here wanting to hear what's going on. I think we should have a discussion of some sort.
Well, I think that that's going to be a tough thing to do since I think we disagree on the fundamental facts. But Ron, have you got any light to shed on how we might discuss residency?
Procedurally, what I would suggest is, we have a motion right now to eliminate item 13A. We'll need to vote on that, depending on how that goes. If that, if the motion is defeated, then we vote on the agenda with that included. If the motion is approved, then we have the proposed agenda without that. Mr. Fritz, at that point, could make a motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion item on residency. If that was supported, then that would be voted on preliminary to an actual vote on the agenda.
What are we going to gain by that? Please help me. What are you going to gain by that? You've already heard the mayor's position. You've already heard Karen's position. Those two aren't going to change. So what are we going to talk about? Help me.
You want me to talk about it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good example, in my family, my sister has two homes in this town, and her residency is in Battle Creek. If you have a house that is worth a substantial amount more, and not saying this is the case here, but if your taxes are much higher in a certain area, usually you put that down as your residency because you don't, you get that homestead effect. You get that money. You get that thing. In my family, we take in honor of not doing those kind of things. She can do it because she has the house here in Grand Haven, not her husband, they live another place in Battle Creek. Her name is Fritz. His name is Marino. So if they wanted to, they could do a homestead here too if they wanted to, but they don't because we see the honorable thing as saying it is actually not a homestead. I'm not saying that she's doing it, but I think we should discuss it. I also seen the water records, and I asked my sister and them what they do with their houses because they're never here. The one house is basically pretty close to what Karen has, and there's nobody in that house. And then my, my wife goes over and takes care of the other house, uses the bathroom, waters the plants, and it's just a hair bit more than a non, than what we have here. I know we can't use this, maybe could, whatever, and I know whether you voted for it, yes or no, we have no jurisdiction. She can still be on council, but at least we have a discussion about whatever it is. If you don't want to do that, that's fine with me. But I'm just stating, my point is that we need to settle this matter somehow in a more civil matter. We have been very distracted. This council, I tell you right now, is just, to my point, is not very good. We need to get back to basics. We need to get back to helping each other. I think we all need counseling. You know, it's, I made a point before we've had that, but it's, needs to be brought out there, and I, like I said, Kevin, I said, my, my family has houses here, and if I look at, I look at these water bills, and I can show you exactly the same thing her water bills are for her house. If you're a resident, my water bill, if you look at mine, you'll see it. It's six point something every, every time. It's average, average always, except for during the summertime, it gets up to almost a 10, you know, because I water my lawn. If you're a resident in the house, you'll be using a ton more water. It's, I just have a hard time with this, to be honest with you. But whether we voted for it, yes. If we voted down and said no, and either way, she's going to be here one way or the other. So, but at least it's out in the open. If people understand what it is all about and how it's going, I myself personally, I'd like to talk. If you guys don't want to discuss it anymore.
I, I would just like to move, I would welcome a declaratory judgment. I would like, I would like the city to file appropriately in the court, saying they are accusing me of this, and give me the opportunity. I am fully confident that I will, that I, that it will find that I am, and my husband are, we are both residents. I am not comfortable with this being held in the court of public opinion without all of the facts.
I agree.
And in front of council in this way. I think this was intentional in a way to try to damage my reputation.
I agree. I think we should pass it over to our attorney. I think we should pass it over to our attorney and let him do the final thing, and if he finds anything appropriate, bring it back to us and let us know.
I think there's an opportunity, if what Karen wants is, there's an opportunity to send it for a legal opinion to the state attorney general and say, do, under these facts, does it, does it constitute residency?
That might take two years. I mean, can't we just go, let's go to the declaratory, just go file. If you believe I'm not a resident, you know, or anyone here would like to allege that, please go ahead and file. Let's get this done.
Ridiculous.
Okay, we've got a vote on the, on the agenda.
Since I got my discussion, I'm already done with the discussion part of it.
So the, can you, can you renew what the vote is on, Ashley? It's to remove item, Kevin?
13A.
13A from new business. Correct.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
No.
Lowe?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Motion passes. Let's move on.
Need a vote on the new agenda.
All right, we need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Is that where we are, Ryan?
We had a motion to approve the agenda. That agenda was just amended by this vote. Now we vote on the original motion to approve the agenda as amended by the vote you just took.
Both the consent and the regular agenda. I'll make that motion.
Got support?
Second, yeah, I think, I think it's already on the floor.
I think we had a motion in support to approve the agenda.
Ashley, call the roll.
Cummins?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Fritz?
No.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Call to the audience. At this time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing council are asked to provide their name and address, and will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at this time. Those not physically present who would like to call in may dial 616-935-3285. If it continues ringing, please remain on the line until your turn. We will take all callers. Please proceed, madam.
Hello, I'm Kelly Larson, owner of Sweet Temptations, Fortino's, and co-owner of Temptations, 1 North Harbor Drive. Some of you don't know me, and I'd like to start by saying that in Rotary, I'm in the, I am the Sunshine Committee, so I'd like to bring you some sunshine here today. You have a lot on your agenda tonight, and we appreciate your support of the lease of Temptations at the depot. Temptations was my first job in 1985, and my parents bought it in 1989. Ice cream and the boardwalk literally go hand in hand, but I don't know that you know what an integral part we play in the community. We are a huge supporter of Anything Grand Haven and are known for our cool school program where we give big bucks back to the school every year. This year, our total donations passed $94,000. We're active in many events, and another thing I help with is praise by the peer. Thank you for your support with that matter as well. Last night, we had over 1,000 folks watching the program at our first free concert of the year. And then there's our ice cream. We work very hard on making the best homemade ice cream and bringing national awards back to, from our convention every year. We just rolled out a special 60th anniversary flavor for the musical fountain called Crowd Pleaser. By the way, if you don't know, of all the events that draw people to the waterfront, the biggest, most consistent crowds are for that musical fountain. I know you have a lot on your plate. We are committed to Grand Haven, and for those of you who don't know, the consent agenda tonight, our lease passed, so thank you for that. We are committed to Grand Haven and would like our flagship store, Temptations, to continue to thrive as an important piece of our town. I would like to ask you that the depot renovations remain high on your list of priorities because although a three-year lease is nice, we very much would like a longer-term lease so we can continue to plan and invest in our business and our town. I would be remiss if I didn't take the time to thank Mr. McGinnis for his passionate work here in Grand Haven. Along with my family, we want to publicly thank you for all that you have done to make our town the best one on the lake shore. We are sad to see you go and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Godspeed.
Jeff?
My name is Jeffrey Miller, and I live at 1120 South Harbor Drive. I am here tonight at the behest of Mayor McNally, who sent me and others an email on Saturday afternoon, asking us to stand up and speak at tonight's city council meeting on the principle of government integrity, and if we have views on the legality or propriety regarding eligibility requirements to hold elected public office. I am gratified that this item has been removed from tonight's agenda, but the damage has already been done to Council Lowe's reputation and integrity. Being the husband of a dentist, I know it is difficult to put back toothpaste once it has been forced out of the tube. Despite that fact, I trust that the appropriate apologies and remedies regarding this situation will soon be attended to. This matter should have never been submitted for adjudication through the legislative means of a single vote by Grand Haven City Council. City council members only received their June 20th packets four days ago, and even if council would have disagreed with this point, that they are the final arbiters of someone's fate, there is the issue of due process and fairness of the accused. Having the mayor being an alleged aggrieved party, an investigator, the prosecutor, the judge, and one-fifth jury in this matter is highly inappropriate. The optics are absolutely terrible. In addition to making matters worse, to instigate this matter and to have it raised minutes before council votes on the contentious issue of recreational marijuana sale ordinance was done in bad faith, all parties involved in the upcoming debate pretty much know that the vote will go three to two, or on the outside chance, four to one. In any event, the immediate damage is done. And for what? And to whom? Politicians need to be able to accept the fact that occasionally their policy positions will be in the minority. Playing the role of the respectful, loyal opposition is acceptable, but to have a demonstrated tendency to lash out at opponents regardless of merit or consequences is totally unacceptable. To instill faith and confidence in government, I am gratified the council have extricated themselves from this eligibility matter tonight. This entire- This entire situation does not reflect well on city government. Openness, fair play, civility, due process, that is what Grand Haven is and should always be about. Thank you.
Got my stopwatch, make sure I don't go over. My name is Pete Stalzer, 7075 Bowman Drive, Middleville, Michigan. Good evening, everyone, and city council members. My name is Pedro, and I'm the host of world famous Pedro's Pigos, that's been held on City Beach since 1991. We've done the event 28 times prior to COVID, and we are a non-net proceed fundraiser for charities for 10 of those years. Our creative group always believe in having fun for all ages. We've had a great time doing it. We appreciate the support of the city council, DPS, Community Affairs Department, and the Out of County for the professionalism for our events since 1991. On June 3rd, 2022, the application has been denied for this year's event for Saturday, August 20, 2022, at the community affairs level in Grand Haven. I filed the application on March 16th, paid $190 in fees. I also known in conversations with the community affairs manager, the city was no longer supplying the power to the parks this year. I stated that was fine. I was going to use a gas generator in previous years, and it was covered under my limited liability policy I'm required for the event. Shar Sree stated, you make sure that you put it on your application of things you're going to use, and she would include the information in her report to Grand Haven Parks and Rec. On May 18th, I received this email from Shar, which you guys have a copy of, I believe, concerning a new temporary power pull policy for the parks. This policy can require a commitment up to $2,500 to install for one-day event. From my understanding, the policy and being applied to the applicant is, which I appealed the policy on, appealed it, I felt the policy was unfair because it was not considering the merits of the events. It could have, it creates a financial inequity for all small groups who do not have the resources to support the policy. It can have a potential impact on the original intent of park purchases or gifts that can be damaging to the city. I'll use an example as Duncan Woods, where the heirs tried to take it back, and in fact, the city beach was only purchased for $1,000. The policy is not tied to any ordinance. I've asked it, I never got an answer. The policy does not provide any other options. No solar, no green, green generators. It's the pole or nothing. The policy can, can cancel our previous plans submitted in special event application prior to the doomed policy, and the city apparently can keep the fees. Community Affairs Department has sole discretion, including the appeal process. They're the final decision maker. They said I couldn't come to you. The applicant has a question. Does the city council recognize a two-paragraph email and the information above the office's official policy and the applicant has no recourse outside of the community affairs? If so, thank you for allowing us to serve the community for over 30 years. If not, we respectfully request reinstatement and seek approval for the event. There's one thing. There is a report floating around about me that I never had any input on. And it's prejudicial to this council because there was a councilman that said something today. Due process means you get to have a say in anything that's presented against you, and that didn't happen. You're not hurting me. You're hurting on the people that we could help. Thank you.
I'm Doug Meantzel, owner of the Copper Post, 100 Washington. And that's it.
Wasn't personal.
You're cutting me shorter and shorter. Anyway, I came to talk about parking. Before I do that, I'd just like to comment on what has just taken place. I believe the city residents, of which I'm one, not one of, but I pay a lot of taxes here, elected Ms. Lo. If they want to take her out of office, let them recall her, and you guys stay out of it.
Amen.
But I want, I came to talk about parking, and I've got a whole new idea on everything I keep hearing up here by everybody that comes up and wants waived fees. Can I ask you, please, my tenants are residents of the city of Grand Haven. I'm not appealing for myself or my employees. I'm appealing for my residents. Could you please waive their fees and parking fines? You're waiving everything else. Let's waive that. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Good evening. This went a lot longer than I thought it was. I didn't realize it was going to be such an entertaining and controversial meeting. My name is Steve Rothman. I live at 11570 Oak Grove Road. I moved here in 2018. And I have to tell you, this is, I grew up in big cities and lived all over the country. This is such a delightful city. Thank you for what we have here. It's very, very special. I moved here because I was going to marry my wife, and we were married three years ago on the 15th of June at Nodos. And it was a wonderful way. It was just absolutely delightful. The food was great. We were married on the beach. Where could you do that anyplace else in this country? And I'm, I'm here speaking in, in support of the Nodos proposal to add a bridal lounge to their building. I don't understand why that's a problem for anybody, but my wife, who couldn't be here tonight, most people don't know me. They probably know my wife, Amy Horning. She used to be Amy Whitperford. Everybody knows Amy. She wanted me to come here to speak in, in support of their proposal, because she would have loved to have a bridal lounge. I'm sure a lot of the people here, the ladies that have been married and their daughters have been married, really understand how important that is. I mean, we had all these guests from out of town, right? Little kids, my, you know, my granddaughters were our bridesmaids. Everybody's running around, and she's in the bathroom, because there's no bridal lounge at Nodos. So please approve the proposal to have a bridal lounge at Nodos. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Simeon, and I live at 1535 Beechery Commons. I'm a card-carrying medical marijuana user. Until recently, I was able to purchase my products here locally. But since the dispensary here in town was only able to sell medical marijuana, it wasn't being profitable for them, so they've temporarily closed. And I now need to drive to Muskegon or to Nunac to pick up my products. And I urge the council to vote yes on this ordinance tonight. On another note, I want to thank the council for your service to the community. I know it's not easy. I was on school board for 22 years, and believe me, I had my share of comments over those years. I just ask one thing. Can we all just get along? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Rebecca Neal, 1644 Franklin Avenue. I'm here to discuss some of the statements that were made in our last meeting in June 6. My name, as I said, is Rebecca Neal, and I'm involved in the medical marijuana permit fee that is currently in process. I have advocated for cannabis for all adults since the day I, I went after this endeavor. And why medical is of relevancy to me, I think that accessibility has what I've advocated from Dave won. In recent comments for both Mayor McNally and Fritz here, they both felt it was appropriate to call my intent deceptive. For those of you that know, I have been involved in these efforts for many years. It is frustrating to be perceived in that way in a student, in a, in a, in a public body. You and neither, either one of you have said it. I've never met either one of you in person. You've never had a discussion with me. It is not appropriate to slander someone you have never talked to. You do not know my intentions with these endeavors. It is frustrating. It is inappropriate behavior. It is, is, it's wildly inappropriate. You will not speak about my ethics. This has been incredibly gratifying opportunity, but it has been hard. It has been very hard. And no other industry has to endure what we have to endure for a medical use, for an adult use, for a business entity. I, why is my privilege, it is 100% my duty to represent those individuals that choose to consume. And that is what I will continue doing. Whether or not you seem to think my nature of this entire endeavor of mine is deceptive and/or falsely claimed because of wetlands that didn't exist, you guys have already approved those statements. This happened back in April. There's no reason for these comments to be coming up now. I will not be bullied. It will not happen. I will continue doing what I am true to do, and I will continue bringing the supporters I have done thus far. I have worked very hard, and I will not be spoke to in a negative way. Thank you. I hope this is better means than.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Pell. I live at 407 Ohio Ave. A few months ago, Mayor McNally told a mutual friend that she was reading The Art of War. And this was how she was going to approach the job as mayor. What a comforting thought. Is it any wonder why our city council is so dysfunctional when the mayor considers anyone who disagrees with her as an adversary, an enemy? That she will defeat any and all at any cost? Must we all wear armor to deflect the ugly hate she carries? I am not done. Must we all wear armor to deflect the ugly hate she carries? No one is safe. Not council members, commissioners, city staff, or residents. For those of you here tonight who think you might have any influence on this mayor, please, please, for the sake of the community, ask her to lay down her weapons. This council chamber has become a hostile work environment for public officials and staff alike. It is you, mayor, you alone, who is responsible for this. Haven't we incurred enough casualties of war and lost enough talented staff via collateral damage? Instead of bringing our community together, your personal attacks and activism have further divided us. It is just six short months, six short months, and you've changed Grand Haven from an inclusive, welcoming community into a war zone. Stop the war games. Do your job as you were elected to do. Grand Haven doesn't need a wartime general. We need a collaborative leader. We need a leader that doesn't just speak of the words values, ethics, but actually lives by them. Our city is facing what could bankrupt our town. We have unfunded pension liability of over $30 million. And cleanup of the contaminants on Harbor Island estimated somewhere around $50 million plus? We need our elected, elected officials focused on these daunting issues, not distracted by having to armor up and defend themselves from vicious personal attacks from the city leader. Grand Haven deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got to reset the timer?
Yeah, you're good. Go ahead, Oliver.
All right. My name is Oliver Champagne. I live at 309 North Lake Avenue, Spring Lake, Michigan. So I'm no longer a resident of Grand Haven, but I spent my whole time here. And for 60 hours of my week, I spent 40 of it at the YMCA, as a camp counselor each day, and another 20 hours at Anna's House on Saturday and Sunday. So. But today, I'm here just to address you, mayor. I'm not really here to address the rest of the city council. You have made personal attacks against both Karen Lo, council member Karen Lo, and council member Kevin McLaughlin, attacking McLaughlin for corruption for a single $500 donation. To me, that doesn't seem like that would deeply influence politics in any fashionable sense. And I, I wonder why we can't ever have these conversations with the council members. Because you went further and sent out multiple, I got paper, I got an email, attacking Karen Lo for her residency. Once again, I don't think that was ever really addressed with her or the people of the city. But I think you should think about how you'd feel if someone did something like that to you as well. I'd first start there. As well, Karen was elected by us. If we had a problem with Karen, we would easily recall her. I, I wouldn't, that's, that's what citizens would do. And I, I think it's curious that you bring that up yourself and not with the city. So honestly, I feel that you're more worried about issues 14B and C of the items, which is to approve recreational marijuana. And the planning commission, once again, it recommends approval. If you actually went out and smoked, smoked, spoke to the community, you'd probably see that. Sorry. You'd probably see that they would agree too. So I want to, I want to end with like, what community do you know? Because from the people I know, the people I've talked to, the people I spend my days with every day, which are a lot of people in Grand Haven and plenty of them here. I really just, I find it frustrating because it doesn't really seem like you know the community. And so I, my question is, what community do you know? Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Oliver.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Dr. Jared Kramer. I'm the director of St. John's Episcopal Church across the street. I reside at 11571 Oak Grove Road in a moderately sized home in Grand Haven Township. I would like to say a few things. I'm here to talk about the fiesta. But like, I want to teach a couple of things before I talk about the fiesta. The first thing I want to say is that Pat McGinnis has been the most gifted and dedicated administration official in the city of Grand Haven that I have ever experienced, and my heart breaks and will miss him so dearly. And I hope you know, Pat, how much I love you and how much this city loves you, and we will miss you, and we wish you all goodness in what's to come. Secondly, it's my understanding, Mayor McNally, that you're practicing Catholic. I don't know the religious affiliations of the rest of you. Michael Fritz prefers to call me Reverend as opposed to Father, but I love him anyways. I want to say, I feel like y'all need to go to confession. And I'm not joking, because this kind of behavior is embarrassing. In the Episcopal Church, everyone's welcome to confession. You don't have to be a Catholic. And if you want to come and confess to me, talk to God a little bit, I'll offer you some advice, some words of counsel and absolution. But we can do better than this in the city. I mean, come on, we can do better than this. Thirdly, man, I didn't know all this stuff was going to be on the agenda. I'm really thrilled about the recreational weed. I don't smoke myself. Like, you do, you as cool. But the, the issues with justice and equity, with the availability for people who have medical use, it's, it's just also really clear that this is a normal thing to do. It's been delivered into Grand Haven all the time, and all we're doing is giving the money to the other people. So let's listen and take care of our people. Last but not least, the fiesta. It is my dear hope that you will approve the request we've put forward to close Columbus and to fence and enclose the entire fiesta. And I want to tell you why. This week, I took the week off. That's why I'm not in my fancy black dress. I took the week off and went with my daughter to John Ball Zoo. And I was walking around at 4:00 in the afternoon, watching the monkeys fling feces at each other. I'm very grateful I had a beer in my hand, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I have a beer in my hand in a public place. And it sure still seems like a family environment to me. Woo! Wild John Ball Zoo, hot butt of liberalism. It, it, it's, it's normal these days. It's normal. And I understand the recommendation of the city is because, well, we've never done that before. There's a lot of things Grand Haven hasn't done before that it probably should start trying. I hope you'll try us. I promise you won't regret it. There were real reservations when we wanted to throw this first fiesta, and every single person who came said, holy smokes, you did something good to bring people together. Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
It's still Jared's time. That was really.
Good evening. My name is Reyna Masco, and I live at 513 Wood Lawn. I'm the co-founder of Tracy Disguantes Initiative and the co-chair of Grand Haven Hispanic Heritage Fiesta. This year will be our fourth fiesta, and as many of you know, our fiesta has grown a lot over the past years. And one of the reasons we wanted to have this fiesta here is because we know that we want to build bridges across the lakeshore. Grand Haven is often seen and known as being unwelcoming, and we want to change that. I have lived here for 23 years, and I know how much has changed, and I know how much people really value diversity, equity, and inclusion in this specific town where I have pretty much grown most of my life. As our fiesta has grown, last year, we were able to have a concert at the Waterfront Stadium, and we had over 2,000 people. We are very proud of the event that we put. We take very good care of making sure everything is done properly. And this year, we're asking for the closure of Central Park and the closure of Columbus, because we want our people to be safe. We want our guests and our residents to be safe. We want our guests and our residents to be safe crossing the streets, separating food trucks to be in the central, in the county building. It's, you know, we have now having people have to cross Washington, and that's hard. We're having people cross Columbus to use the community center, and that's hard. We want to be able to just put on a good community event, a safe community event, and a welcoming and family community event, and have everybody just be enclosed and having a good time. The fact that we're being told that you can't do that because it's never been done, everything that is ever done is because it was done once. And so I ask you for a vote to allow us to do that and bring a really great community event to this community that really needs it, because we want to be known as a welcoming town. And this fiesta allows us to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go next. My name's Ashley. I'm a resident. I live at 100 Washington in an apartment at 303 above Copper Post, who are the only tenants in all of Grand Haven downtown that I am aware of, besides maybe Vacation's Day people that do not have a parking spot. And I would like my own, very own parking spot personally. I would like to not worry if I can park where I live to take my groceries up three flights of stairs. And I don't have that privilege because I am where everyone wants to park. And I see that could be a problem, but the very least you could do is wave and make the people who chalk our tires not chalk the ones who did pay for a $100 pass for the year. Because I cannot find parking spots. I have to move my car a second time to get near where I live at night now. And I've started having problems, and it's not fun. And I would like Grand Haven to still be really fun. I am from a small town, from Zealand, and I actually really like Grand Haven. I feel like it's like a little more welcoming. And now it's becoming more and more of a retirement place, and I see that that can make money and be a great, safe place. But maybe you can market towards the younger generation and open up possibilities. And in my experience, weed is like alcohol, it can be overused. But it can be quite safe and helpful and medical even. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Hagan, 400 Lake. I spoke at the last meeting about the solar opportunity at the airport, and I didn't have data with me, and I brought in the tire report that I'd like to hand off to Ashley and put it as part of the record so that the Sustainability and Energy Group can really look over it. And just a quick review, it was 1.14 gigawatt hours per year. That amount of electricity is equivalent to 100, is equivalent to the electricity that 170 houses would use during a year. So it's very substantial, almost 2,000 panels. So it's a great opportunity, and I sure hope that people will look at it. Thanks.
Jim, is it something that there's a grant for or that our utility you think would pay for? I mean, what is the...
Well, I think it's something that, you know, involving somebody like John Kinsch, who's the head of Michigan Energy Options, there's a lot of different potential models for funding projects. Some are community solar. You know, our friends just down the street are putting in a whole lot of solar and funding it through third-party corporations. So I think there's just a lot of possibilities.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Tina McGinnis, 1335 Oaks Avenue, where I have resided with my lovely city manager husband for 19 years. And I just wanted to publicate, I just want to know, like, do these comments go in the minutes? Like, oh, yes, all right. I want to be in the actual official city minutes as saying that I didn't know the city manager before Pat. Well, I did. I met him later. But I didn't know him, obviously, like I know Pat. And I know that things can get a bit dicey around here, and sometimes you can get upset with Pat. But I just want everybody to know, for the record, that his heart has always been in the right place. He loves this community so much, and everything he has done, he has done with the best intentions. And we've had the best 19 years here, and I just want to publicly say thank you to the community and to Pat, especially Pat, for all of his hard work. On my last Aunt Mary White, he brought me flowers. And I thought, can I bring Pat flowers? That's kind of weird. So I didn't bring him flowers. I brought him me and official minutes. So thank you, Pat, for all your hard work for the city of Grand Haven.
The only thing I'll remove my mask for, and...
Call to the audience. Nicole?
Hello, my name's Nicole Vannenberg. I live at 16814 Virginia Avenue in Ferrisburg. I'm a local Realtor and a local builder, so I have a lot of experience with looking up property tax records, water bills. I want everybody to know that it's public information that is easy to look up. The website that our municipality uses, Anne Grand Haven Township, is BSASoftwareOnline.com. So I read the email that was going around, and I decided to personally verify the facts and personally verify the records of water usage, which I did find to be accurate. I want to talk about why people change their personal residency. Usually, it's because there's a tax advantage where they're paying less taxes in one place or another if they have two homes. The big thing that this does is it, a principal residence exemption gives exemption to paying for the public schools of the municipality that this is located in. So when you have a principal residence exemption, you don't have to pay for the public school operating budget. You do have to pay that on a home that you don't have a principal residence exemption for. So that would be landlords and people with second homes that claim 0% homestead. So based on what I'm seeing with the water usage, the question is whether water usage can prove residency. And what Karen Low has said is that my license says this, my voter registration says this, these are the things that the state looks at to determine residency, which is true. So your residency affects where you can vote. So if you're voting in a municipality that you don't live in, you know, what gives you the right? I own property in Grand Haven, and I would love to vote in Grand Haven, but I can't because I don't occupy the property that I own. And so I vote in Ferrisburg where I live, which is fair. If I want to hold a public office, I can hold one in Ferrisburg, which is where I live. And so as a resolution to this, under the Property Tax Act, the attorney general and the prosecuting attorney of each county in this state has concurrent power to enforce the Property Tax Act. There is a division in Lansing where people sit in an office and investigate property tax fraud. And you can turn your email into them, and they can start an investigation and see. I want everybody to know that if Karen's residency was in Grand Haven Township, her taxes would be different than what she's paying in Grand Haven. And honestly, it wouldn't be to her favor to have her residency to be poplar ridge. She would be paying more, you know, to do that than she would in the township. So I believe she picked her residency there so that she could run for council. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Attorney Laureen Birdsall. I address 2663 44th Street Southwest, Wyoming, Michigan, 49519. I'm here before you again this evening about NOTOS, and I just wanted to just provide a little framework around the topic, if I might. The topic of NOTOS and the challenges that my clients having and some others are having arise from a lawsuit that was filed prior to 2007. That lawsuit was settled in the form of a consent judgment. The consent judgment is still controlled by the court. The consent judgment involved parties, the Highland Park Association, plaintiff named Smith, and the city of Grand Haven, and the then owners of what is now NOTOS, Emily Bilmar. And the topics of interest to the plaintiffs in that case involved rooftop usage, involved story height of buildings, and involved rooftop dining primarily. There were other things in addition to that, lighting, some peripheral things, but those were the primary things. The consent judgment that was signed by the court, which governs the topic before you, was signed in March 2007. It is in effect for 40 years from that date and is binding on all successors of interest, including the purchaser of the property, NOTOS, in 2017. They purchased the property subject to the limitations of the consent judgment, which has three restrictions in it, restrictions one, two, and three. At the time the lawsuit was filed, there was an existing building, proposed building plan in place to reconstruct the then restaurant. That plan expired in 2009. That plan was not constructed. However, the restrictions in place are imposed on all structures on the property, and they run with the land. They are not limited to just that structure that was in place at the time the lawsuit was filed. So the remedy for the parties that originally brought the suit and those successors of interest to those plaintiffs, if the plan that NOTOS is currently proposing goes through without their written approval, which is required by the consent judgment, is that they can go back to the court and ask the court to stop the construction and ask for other legal remedies. So we're before you, continuously asking you not to approve this plan until and unless NOTOS gets the written confirmation, written approval from the successors of interest, the plaintiffs to the plaintiffs in that original lawsuit and that consent judgment. That's what we continue to wait for. That's what you asked for at the last meeting, which you saw me in attendance at, and we have yet to be contacted by NOTOS seeking that, myself and my client, seeking that approval from my client and others as successors of interest. Anything else is really irrelevant. This is a 40-year, running with the land, running with the property limitation, and it is in place until 4047. And that's my final comment.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Doug Van Essen from the law firm with Silver and Van Essen, and I represent the NOTOS family. I was going to address this issue when it comes up on your agenda, but I'm here at the council's pleasure. So if you would prefer to hear me respond to Ms. Birdsall's comments at this time, I'm willing to do that, or to defer the issue when it comes up on your agenda.
I'd like to hear the response.
Sure, okay. We agree that of the 57 pages in that 2007 consent judgment, about four or five sentences still apply. And those are restrictions one, two, and three, which apply to future buildings. The reason those restrictions were put in there by the lawyers is exactly to address this situation where the original site plan by Mr. Meyer that was approved didn't get constructed, for whatever reason, and expired according to the site plan's approval in 2009. The lawyers and all the parties and Judge Van Alstergaard agreed that three restrictions would live on. The deck, the no rooftop dining, that's restriction one, the height, that's restriction two, the outdoor dining, which is restriction three. Now, those are the only three that all the parties and the judge agreed to as restrictions that would live beyond the original site plan and apply to future buildings. In no way did the city commit to a 40-year period that that was the only site plan that was ever going to apply to that property and that construction. Indeed, in 2018, my clients built a different building pursuant to a different site plan, but they agreed and honored restrictions one, two, and three. No one had a problem with that, and that is the proper interpretation of those carry-on clauses. In no way would Judge Van Alstergaard have ever approved a situation where the parties were locked into one building for 40 years. That would put the judge in the position of micromanaging any construction project. He didn't do that in 2018, and I guarantee you, he's not going to do it in 2022. My client has lived in this proposal, which is only to extend the second floor over the first floor where it's not extended. He's going to take the roof off, put a new roof on, extend his second floor over the first floor. That is not rooftop dining, under anyone's interpretation. There's no violation by all who agree with the height restriction in restriction two, nor is there any change to the outdoor dining. All he's doing is extending his second floor in a manner that is still smaller than the original site plan for the property. If Ms. Birdsall disagrees with that interpretation, and she can try to prove that somehow the extension of the floor, ripping off the roof and extending the second story in an enclosed structure, somehow is rooftop dining, she has the right, under the consent decree, to take that issue in front of Judge Van Alstergaard. I don't think she'll get far, but that's her right. The city should not step in and agree to that kind of strained interpretation, which didn't occur in 2018. There is no material impact on any of the neighbors for that extension of that property, which is still below the original height, and with the removal of the trees, does not interfere with the historical viewpoint of the Highland Park Association. So we hope that this council will affirm the planning commission and move this project on. And if parties think that they have a remedy, they have the remedy in court, and they can do that. But they should not interfere with my client's rights to build a property within those three restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have any phone calls? Oh, Pat, were there phone calls?
We missed one. It came in and left that quickly, but no, they're non-holding.
Okay, all right. I don't think we're going to necessarily worry about that. All right. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
And second.
Motion by McLaughlin, second by Fritz. Any discussion?
Can I read it?
Ashley, are you going to read it for us, please?
This is to approve the special works...
This is to approve the special work session in regular city council meeting minutes of June 6, 2022, to approve the bill's memo and the amount of $484,894.20, to approve a three-year license agreement extension from October 10, 2022 through October 10, 2025, for the tenants currently occupying the Grand Trunk Depot, including Temptations, Grand Haven Beach Company, and Peace Rogues, and authorize the mayor and interim clerk signatures. To approve a three-year agreement with Seven Steps Up to co-promote four concerts per year at the Lynn Sherwood Waterfront Stadium, and authorize the mayor and interim city clerk to execute the necessary documents. To approve the terms of a new three-year contract renewal with Grand Haven RC Flying Club in the amount of $300 annually, and authorize the mayor and interim city clerk's signatures. Approve a policy renewal for property and liability insurance coverage through the PAR Plan administered by Municipal Underwriters of Michigan in the amount of $182,742 for a one-year period beginning July 1, 2022. To approve a one-year lease renewal with Life Church of Grand Haven, Michigan for the use of the annexed building located at 18 North Fifth Street, and authorize the mayor and interim clerk's signatures. Approve a contract with the Police Officers Labor Council from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor and interim clerk's signatures. To approve a contract with the Services Employees International Union from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor and interim clerk's signatures. Approve a resolution to sign MERS-defined contribution plan adoption agreements for non-union SEIU, POLC Command, and POLC Patrol new hires, and to authorize the mayor and interim clerks' signatures. To approve a ten-year license agreement renewal with the Ottawa County Department of Public Health for the operation of an environmental sustainability center located at 16850 Comstock with an annual fee of $1,800, and authorize the mayor and interim clerk's signatures. To approve the 2022 Armory Anniversary Party to be held on Saturday, September 10 from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. in the parking lot on Franklin and Second, and to allow alcohol and amplified sound. To approve the recurring Art on the Riverfront event to be held on Saturday, August 20, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the Marina Green Space, including 22 parking spaces. To appoint Emily Green as Finance Director for the City of Grand Haven. To approve budget amendments for the General Fund, Major Streets Fund, and Local Streets Fund. To approve partnering on the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant submitted by Ottawa County, and pledge $150,000 in matching funds for this project through the work being done by HDR Environmental Services. And to approve a fee waiver for the NOAA Ferry Program to be held at the Grand Haven Community Center on Saturday, November 12, 2022.
Any discussion?
It's the point of clarification on the Police Officers Command contract. I asked Pat this weekend, the appendix we had in our packet for the contract looked to be the old appendix from their prior contract. It just showed two years of wage increases. It showed 2020 and 2021. I assume it's three years at 3%, and that chart will be updated appropriately. It has been updated, excellent.
Thank you, Emily.
Been all over it, and I just want to thank our staff last meeting. I want to thank our staff again. This takes the rest of our employee unions and officially brings us to a point where, for new hires, our pension plan is closed, and we are, all new hires, bringing them in under a defined contribution plan. We're offering a conversion option to all of our employees, and I want to thank all of you and our staff and management, and this has been a significant undertaking and a lot of angst and I'm sure some concern and wonders. We've gone along, but I appreciate your patience. I'm so grateful that we're at this point. We're going to have some work to do to figure out the finances as we go forward, but Emily is our new finance director. I am confident, soon to be, and in seconds, you'll get us there, so thank you.
I'd also like to just note the last, well, not counting the one we added on, item P, which is, I think, a really promising start for some of the environmental remediation on Harbor Island if we get it. So, I'm grateful our staff found a way to partner with the county parks, and I hope that comes to fruition in a way that gets us a little closer to some habitat restoration over there, so.
I'd just like to add on that. Ryan, you're talking about staff and them working hard on the contracts. I just want to say a big thank you to Bonnie coming back in and helping us out.
You out there?
Bonnie Suchek, yeah, I'd like to say thank you so very much for coming back and giving us a hand.
And getting the job done. Bonnie, thank you very much.
For filling in for Interim HR Director, so you did a fantastic job for doing it, and I appreciate all your help. So, thank you again. I know July 1 is the date, if I remember correctly, you are officially done and back to retirement, so thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, very much. Okay, I think that's all the discussion. Ashley, would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Emily, congratulations.
Yes, Emily.
Well deserved. Okay, moving on to new business. We have no presentations. New business, item B, I think is where. Pat, you got something?
No, I was hoping she'd read it, and then I did want to comment if I might, Your Honor.
Yes. Would you read it for us, Ashley?
A resolution to approve the recurring Grand Haven Hispanic Heritage Fiesta to be held at Lynn Sherwood Waterfront Stadium on Friday, September 16, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and to allow amplified sound and consumption of alcohol on Saturday, September 24, 2022, in Central Park from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and to allow consumption of alcohol and amplified sound.
Pat, did you have something?
Yes, Your Honor, I did want to just comment that Raina is here tonight, and she's and her team have put in a lot of work on this project for some time, and I think you've all hopefully had the opportunity to experience a really wonderful event the last several Septembers, and there are various options laid out. Shar is also here from the staff side of things, and a little bit about the precedents and doing something for the first time. You know, fencing off Central Park completely and maybe closing one of our two one-way pairs, I think rises to the level of city council consideration and direction. So, that's why the staff said no, because we've not done it before, and if it's going to be allowed, it probably ought to be something that rises to this level. So, that's why I took it off the consent agenda. Most of these event approvals wind up on your consent agenda, but this one, I thought if we get it on a new business, it elevates it and gives the proponents, those that submitted the application, a chance to explain things, and maybe you guys a chance to direct some compromise or some precedent-breaking moves that might change things for the future, because, you know, doing something like that is very different from the way we've done it in the past, and I'm just a little more comfortable if the elected officials have a chance to discuss and direct that sort of thing, rather than staff bringing it to you as a just sort of course-of-business thing. So, I just wanted to explain it to you why it was coming to you on new business in this way, and I'm really pleased the applicants were able to make it tonight so that you could have a good discussion.
Thanks, Pat.
You can make a motion if you'd like.
Mike, would you make a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion for this.
So, you're going to move approval of this, with which of the items?
As it was read.
Well, except I think it was read to...
As it was presented to us by the applicant.
Plan A.
Yes, as planned, what is...
As Plan A.
Yes.
All right, any second of that?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Does everyone understand?
Yep, closing the street.
Yeah, Plan A includes closing Columbus and Fourth Street and allowing fencing off Central Park for alcohol consumption within the park.
Very good. Since you got, I'll make it, I like to talk about this. Yes, we have had a precedent where we did close the street off for a wedding. I happened to go by there when it happened, and I tell you what it was, it was during the pandemic, and it was also because they wanted to get their wedding in, and it had to be outside, and we closed the street off. It was not an inconvenience whatsoever. And also, in closing off Central Park, I can understand what they want to do with that. It's a good thing because they have a one little area. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the occasion down there when they have for the Fiesta. It's such a great thing. I have such a good time. As I mentioned earlier, my brother-in-law, his last name is Marino, and he's actually, his family moved from Mexico here, and I attend it, and I love it, I love everything about it. I can't tell you how much good it is, but also to have him be able to walk across the street without having traffic there. Last year, when you had to go there, you had to walk across Washington Street and traffic going both ways. It's very, very difficult when you have kids and stuff trying to get to the food trucks and get to different things. I think it's much better for us to have them all in one location, keep it that way. So, a good example, I had a discussion with the mayor earlier. We were talking about down there for Salmon Fest. We fenced off that whole area there, and it's kid finery and everything else. I think it's a good idea, so I'm willing to put myself out there and say, let's do this.
Anybody else?
I agree with Mr. Fritz's assessment. We have a whole block of Washington right now closed for downtown dining and...
Yep.
Madam Mayor, I too. I think, I don't think it sets a precedent when we try something new, you know? We can always go back and say, hey, that did not work out well, and I think you put together a great application. We understand what you're trying to do, and you're trying to make it safer, so thank you. I'm fully supportive.
Kevin, anything?
And I also support, and I guess one of the, I thought the letter that you submitted was really excellent, and probably one of the points that I considered was the time of year. It's a little later in the season, so it's really not such a busy time, and I think it's good for the town to have something to do in September, and I think it's going to have a much lower impact on traffic than it might at other times of the year, so thank you.
Sure.
Come up to the mic.
Yeah, come to the mic so we can hear, though, if you wouldn't mind.
So, we have here the gentleman who we have hired, who's a professional and does festivals throughout West Michigan, and so he knows exactly what he's doing, and Shar was impressed with him when she met with him, and so was Public Safety, and so we're not doing it ourselves. We're hiring professionals to do the fencing and help us make it safe.
We wish you well, and we look forward to attending.
Thank you.
Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Cummins?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Unfinished business? Ashley, would you read the next item, item A?
This is a final resolution to approve an amendment to the approved plan development for NOTOS at the Bilmar. The proposed amendment is to construct a conference room/bridal lounge addition and second-story deck and enclose an existing three-season patio.
Any motion to that effect?
So, moved?
Okay.
Before we discuss, Councilmember Low, you have previously identified a conflict with this issue. Does the conflict still exist, and do you want us to consider excusing you from deliberations? Oh, she's over there. Didn't see you, sorry, Karen. I couldn't see past Ryan, so I think we have to, but I think we have to, that wasn't your fault. I think we have to vote again, however, on excusing Councilmember Low from deliberations and consideration of this motion or motion.
I think if we voted on excluding her from this issue...
In the past, we're okay?
The same issue.
Okay.
Nothing's changed, there's no reason to do that again.
Okay. Okay, discussion? No discussion? Ashley, call the roll.
Cummins?
Oh, sorry?
We've obviously gone back and forth on this a lot, and it seems like some of this has shifted a little bit over time. You know, my zoning concerns on this, you know, from my perspective are a few, you know? If they're approved at the intent, which is to promote and ensure greater compatibility of design and use between and among neighboring properties, I think there's some dispute amongst some neighboring properties in this property. To find are the development requirements that the planning commission and the city council must reach a finding that all such proposed uses and the impacts they may generate on one another and on the surrounding community shall be generally compatible and harmonious with one another. There's still some disharmony amongst, between some folks, and I've, even more than that, I've had some concerns, you know, from the NOTOS on, you know, their previous site plan approval and containing everything in their storage area. I think that, you know, it's been brought up, you know, the garage doors are always open, and it's not representative of what we are looking to see from, you know, as folks are driving along our beach and, you know, and seeing trash containers and things kind of all over the place. And I get it's a small area, and it's, there's not much storage space there, but that's kind of the requirements that were in place when this was built in the first place, and so I've had ongoing concerns with that. You know, I think the planning commission at their last meeting said, hey, you know, you should really stripe that area, or was supposed to be, I think striped in the first plan. I could be wrong on that. The area outside of those dumpster enclosures, and it's still not striped. And then, you know, cars continue to park right along the building, and I don't think those cars that are parking right along the building, that those are not designated parking spots, to my knowledge, and I just, the other day, I was driving by and witnessed that people have to go way around the cars, and they're right along the roadway there, and so I have ongoing concerns that, you know, the prior site plan approval is causing, you know, some issues, and our PD design considerations and performance standards, you know, require that we make sure that those visual screening and outdoor storage requirements are being met, so I have some ongoing concerns with those things before, you know, approving additional factors to this site. So, from a zoning standpoint, I have those concerns.
Do you want to have them addressed by the NOTOS who are here, or...
Well, they certainly can. I think they have in the past, and I think that they, we've discussed some of them in the past, and they continue, from my perspective, to be an ongoing concern, so, but they're welcome to make comments as they wish, if you're willing to allow that.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Councilmember Cummings, by the concerns. If you're concerned about their current operations and whether they're consistent with past site-approved plans that aren't really before the council tonight, we'll certainly address those questions. That's a matter of enforcement of your existing zoning, and we haven't heard about any concerns from the city, the city administration about those issues. We can certainly address those in a different forum. We want to make sure that we're in compliance with the city ordinances and, you know, the spirit and the letter of those previous site plans. This is, what you have before you tonight is simply an extension without increasing the capacity of the second floor to add a bridal suite area and space out their dining within the height restriction.
I'm aware, sir, thank you.
Yeah, and you're only taking away, you know, a certain section of the roof, so that's what's germane to what was before the planning commission, and that's why they unanimously approved it.
Well, I have to find that all of these standards are met to approve this change, and I don't think that they necessarily have been historically, and that's my concern, so.
Yeah, with all due respect, I believe your legal obligation is to find out whether this extension of the second floor is consistent with the zoning code and the site plan approval that the planning commission has given. To take other issues that, for the first time, you're presenting to the NOTOS...
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate, and I'm not going to have you tell us that's accurate. It's been brought up before.
It's been brought up multiple times in the past.
It's the first time you've been here.
Both that planning commission and at this, at city council.
I don't know of any enforcement issues that have been...
I would just, for the record, state that residents, people have said these things, but we do not have any record of complaints being filed or enforcement actions being taken, so yes, it's true that it's been brought up, but I don't have any evidence of those actual violations being filed. I don't know that there have been violations issued. I don't know that there have been violations issued.
That's not true, that's probably just a council.
Laurie, you gotta, just, just, we're not in a position to do that. But I guess what I would say is all of us live in town and we go by the beach fairly frequently and we can observe what we observe. I, I just, I, I understand your point, sir.
Ron, you got any guidance for us on this?
Well, I do believe this is limited to a review of the planned development expansion that the planning commission recommended. So as I laid out, I think in my last, May 27, I believe was my last correspondence, if we're going to reject the planning commission recommendation, I think it has to be based on the standards and the zoning ordinance for this expansion. That's what's at issue. And that, that's what we have the recommendation on from the planning commission and that's what our decision should be based on, one way or the other.
Well, and the planning commission, Ron, made conditions related to some of these concerns and I'm, so.
Well, which is exactly, entirely appropriate, so we, conditions can be placed on, on an approval. There's, there's no issue with continuing the planning commission conditions. If, but we would have to make different findings on the standards to reach a different conclusion than the planning commission did. The planning commission made findings, made a decision, and attached some conditions to eliminate problems. If we're going to make a different decision, we have to make different findings on those factors or standards.
But if they made conditions and the conditions have not been remedied or have not been met.
The approval hasn't been given yet.
Partly, and, and Ron's correct, I mean, the, the full approval hasn't been given, but I think they were making, adding conditions to rectify issues from the, the first time that, that still weren't addressed and weren't being addressed adequately.
And my client will fully comply with any conditions that are imposed on the property.
Well, as, as the mayor said, we drive by there every single day and trust me, we'll know if you do it or not. So we really hope that it's something that we addressed to, to Tony and his brother before and we really hope that, that he lives by that, that's what I'm saying.
Anything further, Ron?
I, I don't know.
Nope. Anybody else?
I'm all set.
Anything more from you, Ron?
No.
All right. Ashley, please call the roll.
Cummings?
No.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Just, I would say this, a two to two vote is not a, obviously not an approval, but it is not a rejection either. The matter is still pending here. You have not resolved this matter. It's still sitting in front of you. It doesn't have to be resolved tonight, but until we have a motion that is passed, we have not taken action.
So noted.
Thank you, sir. Okay, items B, item B. Can we read it for us?
A final resolution to repeal section 9.5-38 and amend sections 9.5-39 through 45 of the City of Grand Haven Code of Ordinances to allow and regulate certain adult-use marijuana establishments and amend the 2022-2023 budget to add adult-use fees of $5,000 for application and renewal fees, consistent with the fees charged for medical marijuana facilities.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Let's ask Mr. Porcy what, if any changes have been made since our, our first reading. I, I do know that our staff did add in the, the fees, other than that.
Yes, so there were just some small but significant changes from last time. The first, there was an addition of a comma regarding clarifying inspections. There was another addition of a comma, talking about resubmital and about pending criminal charges, looking at to what kind of charges an applicant has against them in, looking at an application. There was one, another small change was between last time and this time, after discussion with City Manager McGinnis. There's a appeal process for complete applications. So when someone gives a, an application, there's that first review of it that says whether it's complete or not complete. And there's an appeal process for that. If someone believes that they have a complete application and the city says, we don't believe it's complete. The original version had the appeal going to, I think, I don't remember, maybe the city manager. But in any event, it was changed to be city attorney. We decided against that because we both represent you and then we could be put in an awkward position of also being called as a witness if, if it were challenged. And so you don't, wouldn't want to be representing the very body that you're being called as a witness for. So we changed that to city council. So if there's an appeal of whether an application is complete when it first comes in the door, that appeal would come to you. And of course, you'd have our advice as well to review that. And finally, there was a clarification made to already existing medical marijuana facilities and when the ring is, buffer ring is drawn around, that happens when it's triggered by a land use approval and having valid land use rights. So we wanted to peg it to the land use approval because that's kind of really what runs with the land. And before it said, you had to have an actual license, city permit as well. And that would only have encompassed, I believe, one business, so.
I'm sorry, that would only what, Tom?
Have encompassed one business. Having both a permit and land use rights.
A land use permit, okay.
So this would cover those facilities that have land use rights that are still valid.
And do we know how many of those there are?
There will be two that have gotten their land use approvals that are still valid, that are still in play. The one over on Jackson by the credit union and the one that did open and then closed where, next to Subway, I guess.
And, and the third one?
By D and W and their permission, their land use permission has lapsed.
Lapsed?
Yeah, they, they have put a different business in that building.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, those are, those are really the only changes from last time that are worth noting. And the S was added to the, the, that Scrivener's error on the zoning ordinance as well.
Okay, anything else?
I'm just gonna say is that I never, if you remember back when we first started in medical marijuana, I was, me and Mr. Bruegger, Councilman Bruegger and I were both the ones that brought it into Grand Haven. Because the same thing had happened, Mr. Simeon here, is that a lot of our citizens had to go out of town for it. And that's why we went to medical marijuana. And it, it's really inconvenient when you're eighty-seven years old, you can't hardly drive and you have to drive out of town for something. It's too bad that it went out of business, but it's not a decision that, you know, it's, it's a business decision for him. But it was really nice that we had medical marijuana here. Now, far as recreational, I never said I was for or against it, but I was definitely in promotion for, to do medical marijuana, so. Just want anybody to know that. And I just didn't like the processes in which we were told to tell the planning commission to fast-track it. I was not in favor of fast-tracking anything. Good businesses, I mean, a good government business is making sure you dot every i, cross every t, and make sure you do everything in a slow motion, make sure it's done correct. I want to say thank you to the planning commission for working so hard and so diligently on it and not really fast-tracking it. They did their time and they did spend a lot of time, a lot faster. They gave an April deadline and here it is, you know. It's in June now, so I want to say thank you to them for at least taking a good, long look and doing what they were supposed to do. And just take their time and making sure. I just don't like, I just don't like anything being fast-tracked. It's not a good thing. And that's all, I'm, say no more.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Ashley, would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
No.
Low?
Yes.
Cummings?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Next item, please, Ashley.
This is a final resolution to amend sections of the Grand Haven zoning ordinance to regulate medical and adult-use marijuana facilities.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by McLaughlin, second by Low. Discussion?
I want to say thank you to the planning commission for making the zoning what they did and the buffer zones as large as they are and going forward with it. Seeing now that this is passed, you know, I'm definitely gonna go for this because I did look at the zoning on it and I think they did a very good job. I want to say thank you for them, like I said before, making sure that they do it right and get it done right for us, so. I'm in favor of a zoning, since it's already passed for the other part, so. I accept my responsibility as being a councilman and moving up on it, so there you go.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could.
Your turn, go ahead.
Sorry, just to, in the.
Oh, some changes?
Just in the interest of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, there was one S added to the word establishments, section forty-five, forty-three, A, B, four, C, so I just wanted to.
Was it just a typo?
Typo.
Yep.
Just to put an S on the end.
All right.
But I just wanted to have for the record.
Full disclosure, thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just, just a question on the, the process from here. What, a twenty-one day publication period? And then our, our city staff will put together that lottery process and, and similar to what we did last time, I assume. Something similar. Is that, is that accurate?
That, that is accurate. We will be, uh, uh, setting up a very clear and precise procedure to hold that lottery, running it by Tom, again, to just triple-check, to make sure we're not overlooking anything. Ashley's put up the, the new map with the two twenty-five-hundred-foot buffers and you can see that there's a very few locations where adult use would be allowed, retail sales. You know, some are out in our industrial areas and then there's a couple very small ones down there on the south side of town where it would be permitted by right, or no, still special use.
Special use.
Yeah, still special use, so. I expect we'll, we may get some applications for the, the last remaining adult use that's outside of existing buffers.
So, um, it's a lottery, I think. We, we figured that out. So do you publish a period of time, like thirty days? Is it opening for thirty days for people to submit to the lottery and then draw?
We'll, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, just the city manager has authority under the ordinance to set up.
Oh, Ashley?
Ashley.
Great.
So, we'll work together on creating a process for that.
All right.
Is it thirty days that we said?
I, I just asked, I don't know how many days it is, but yes, I, I just figured thirty days is kind of a, a period of time that's commonly understood in the law, let's just say.
Yeah, the city manager has the authority to set that procedure, so we'll work with them to get it ordered.
Gotcha. Okay, Ashley, could you call the roll?
Low?
Yes.
Cummings?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Okay. I think we go to report by city council. Mrs. Low, would you like to take that on?
I'll, I'll defer to the others first, your honor.
Well, I'll start it off. It's been a long road, Pat. I remember when I first ran for council, there was a guy named Bill Baldridge that was here, was an interment city manager. It was an inter, for interment, it was pretty interesting because all the information I was getting was coming to me from him. And then all of a sudden, the city council hired Pat McGinnis. Two months later, a year I was, I was elected, came in, and it's been a long haul. And I appreciate every minute. There's been times, uh, there's times when the city manager, you don't get along with the council at times. And it's been a rough road at different periods of time, but we seem to work it all out through the council and that. And Mayor Bergman at the time says, we need to have continuity and keep somebody here. If you're from Grand Haven, you know from history is that our city managers didn't last a long time here. They seemed to want to move them out of town, fast and hard. And Roger said, we need to keep somebody for continuity. Nineteen years is a long time. You know, I mean, you can look back in the history of Grand Haven, you can see city managers, they're coming and going. It was a, I'm sure when you came here, everybody was asking you, sure you wanted to come to Grand Haven, you know, they have a revolving door. But you made it strong, Pat. You devoted your time and you'd work hard. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all your service and I look at you as not only as a city manager and a my employee, but also a good friend. I got to watch your kids grow up. This is emotional for me because I'm losing you. Thank you, Mike. And I'll just say that, you know, when I got here, my, my oldest daughter was just out of first grade. And tonight, you sit in the audience. Yes, she's a fourth grade teacher. She made it all the way through, I forget what university that was.
The wrong one, apparently.
Yeah, yeah, but no, she went to Michigan State University, got a teaching certificate and is now a teacher at Griffin School. For a couple of years now in fourth grade, so that's how long I've been here. She's a little. I remember that. I also remember coming into your office one day, you're sitting down here and banging on the window and scaring you. And you unlocked the door and let me in and the first thing I said was, what are you doing here? He goes, well, I got this job to do here. And I says, no. I says, you have a young family at home. That's your top priority. When they go to bed, you can come back and finish your work, but you have to be there for your family. Those are the first words that I told you and that was, I think it was a good words because you did a good job with your family. And they've grown up to be quite what it is, you know. It's great. So thank you again, Pat. I don't know how much more I can say. I got a whole history with you here, so. And my youngest is working for a township now, so here we go, another generation.
Pat, I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Really good luck in Portage.
Right. Yeah, that's my comments tonight as well, Pat. I want to thank you. I've, I've learned a ton from you and, and my short-term upsides here, both at the planning commission level and sometimes you would, you would come to meetings and probably pull the rest of your hair that you had out when we were making certain decisions on, on certain things. But I've always been so impressed by Pat as being everywhere and involved with everything. I mean, heck, he slept in a fire truck bucket. For a whole night because of the money that, that staff raised. You always find a way to put a, a positive look on things and spin on things and, and look at it from a positive perspective. And I've always appreciated that about you. You've always been more than available. Answer texts, calls, emails when there's concerns. You've been extremely patient with us. Sometimes when you're probably like, what the heck are they doing or getting at and, you know, and, and we, we have those moments back and forth, I'm sure, at, at times. But I, I've learned a ton. I've so appreciated, you know, your ability to collaborate with so many other entities and find deficiencies and, and do things with others instead of, you know, the city doing it all. The ability to work with so much philanthropy to bring in help from others. To leverage grant dollars. I mean, your staff, I think, have done just a fantastic job at that over the years and leveraging those grant dollars and bringing money back to Grand Haven when there's been so many challenges with revenue sharing and tough fiscal times. And so I wish you great, great luck down in Portage. I think you're gonna do a fantastic job. I have no doubt that we'll continue to see you back here because Grand Haven's a fantastic place and I know you love it. And you've done an excellent job of carrying the torch and I appreciate your service, so thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
I, Pat, I don't know what to say. You, you know, kind of an icon here. And these are very big shoes that you leave for your successor and we all wish you the best. I just hope that people will. I just hope that people will give a chance to the person who succeeds you, because once you were that green-haired, green, green-haired, green-haired, you were that young, that young sprout. And so, while, you know, it's bittersweet and saying farewell is not really farewell, let's be Grand Haven and welcome whoever has chosen to succeed you and give them a chance to succeed, because look what happened. You had eighteen, nineteen, almost nineteen-plus years and many, many accomplishments, and so we all thank you for that. I guess the only other comment that I'll make this evening is, I will say, I've only been in this role for six months, seven months we've been in here, and I've been, I'm a very private person. And... I have worked so hard to do whatever I could, and I continue to do that, and that is why I retained an attorney this weekend to defend me from some very serious allegations. Since, over a year ago, when I considered running, I wasn't even wanting to run for office. In fact, I went to give my support to Mayor McNally, encouraging her to run and asking her, as an introvert who would rather read and stay inside most of the time, I said, "I can do spreadsheets, I can do anything for you." And she said, "No, I need you to run for council because I'm going to run for mayor." And I reluctantly did because she convinced me that I had the business and financial background. And as I started to look at how our financial status, I saw that indeed my background could help, in particular with our pension. But in that process of campaigning, I learned a lot from all of you. You came to me with a very serious problem around the BLP and a gas peaker plant, which I knew nothing about, but I joined with you to understand your issue and continued to fight to get what our people wanted. When I was elected, I tried to fulfill the promises I made to you to work on addressing the pension issues, and I continue to work on that. We have a very major milestone that's coming up, and I like to believe that I was a big part of pushing to get our city there to a point where we can close the pension to the new hires. I continue to try to do what I can on the financials, and we're not done yet, but I've worked diligently on that. I've tried to bring my consulting expertise to help us draft a strategic plan where we could try to foster some unity and growth and something that would live to help this team move forward. Most recently, I tried, and we were successful, in getting an energy and sustainability committee, something, again, that you, the people, wanted. Some of you out there have come to me with other issues. I've always tried to listen and tried to act on your issues, understand what they were, understand all sides of the issue. I'm having a very hard time after what I've been, to be personally attacked by a member of this council and leader of our city in a vicious way. And I would just encourage all of you, if you have any questions or if they make, please, let's get this out of the way, let's go through the appropriate court, let's get it declared. I am happy, but I am not going to be bullied and threatened. You don't know me, Madam Mayor. You don't know anything about my husband and our life and what properties we have anywhere in the world. You have no idea how we've spent our time, and just because we have water bills doesn't mean we're there or not there. You do not know me. No, because it's the majority of your time, but what if you are not in Michigan? Have you ever thought about that? No, you have not. And so, I categorically reject, as a partner in an accounting and consulting firm, it's an insult. It's as though I'm accusing you of not being a patriot. I know precisely, and yes, we do pay more taxes. My husband will be sitting here, "Why are we paying more?" Because this is our home, and that is the right thing to do on a days-in and days-out basis. But you've never considered the fact that we might only consecutively be in the city of Grand Haven or in even the state of Michigan for eight months out of the year. You've judged us, and you have no idea, you have no idea. But I will not go forward talking with, you know, I'm insulted, I'm upset, but let's just go forward. If you have any concerns, let's, please, don't go out and damage my reputation. Let's file this appropriately, let's have it out in court, but I'm not going to sit here as I continue to work for the city. I've hired an attorney, I've retained her, let's, I'm going to let her work on that, and I'm going to get back to the business of the city because that's what the people elected me to do, not to have a discussion among people who do not have the authority to remove me from office, all to try to damage my reputation. That's all.
Pat, thank you for your exceptional service. I'll have a few more remarks at your farewell, which people are invited to on Thursday, this coming Thursday, at between four and six at Portabello's. Is that right, Ashley?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. City manager?
May I say just one more thing?
Sure.
I just want to give a shout-out to our Public Works people that put the flowers in the park. Our parks look beautiful, and also for them repairing our beautiful fountain, getting that going, I want to say thank you to them. And since this is the Juneteenth, I think next year, we might want to call this and have a meeting on a Tuesday instead of having it here at this time, in respect for the Juneteenth. I think it might be something we might be considering. I think it was, I know it was a big night tonight, but I think we should probably observe that as a national holiday, and we should probably move it to like a Tuesday night or whatever, whenever that falls on, so that's just my recommendation. I had it written down here, and I always forgot to read it when it was my turn, so I just want to bring that up.
I'm guessing this time next year, Monday might not be Juneteenth, well...
What, if it is?
Generally, it's...
It's a federal holiday, so we've got to observe it.
It's a good, it's a good observation. Anything, Pat?
Yes, your honor, I'm going to set three minutes out of fairness, because I do it to everybody else. But, like those lawyers did, I get to go over a little bit. So, I'm going to just quickly start out, I ask Ashley, before my final moment as city manager, to put that on the agenda, or I'll ask her to, she doesn't have to, for Juneteenth, it's a nationally-recognized holiday, so it will be a day next year, and the city council could close City Hall, and I don't think the employees would be distressed by that at all. And it would be appropriate, it's spreading across the country, it's just a matter of time, and I think we held out way too long in MLK Day. We just did that last year, and I don't think we have to wait till we negotiate with our unions. You can start by leading and doing that for non-union. Did want to just give kudos to the other side of the table in our union negotiations. They too brought it. It wasn't always fun, there were some very tense moments, and I want to congratulate and thank city council as well because you were there, having special meetings and spending your time reading through all that stuff and helping us bring that home. So, and I think they're very good contracts, you've got another three years now to work out some of the follow-up things we have to do to follow through with those contracts. Did want to add one more person to that Sustainability and Energy Commission, that's on your agenda under City Manager Reports, setting that up. There's a list of people. I put everybody on there that contacted me, and they're all good people that have great intentions. I want to add Oliver Champagne. He was sort of here earlier tonight, he's a young man who's got great interest in environmental issues, and I want to keep this under three minutes, so I did want to comment on all of the great things you did do tonight. I know there's been a lot of public attention on some of these divisive topics, which are, which is probably deserved, because we have had some words, we all get that, and we're all saying that we want to get beyond that, and I know you can. But just like after your last meeting, I made a list the next day, and I was inspired and proud that you extended several leases, you did the Seven Steps Up lease on the stadium, you approved our liability insurance, which is some great savings, it's a very big deal, two labor contracts, the defined contribution deal, getting rid of that DB plan has been years in the making, and you guys got it done. That is huge. The Sustainability Center, the National Fish and Wildlife Fund grant, the Heritage Fiesta, all the events you approved, and I think, most importantly, appointed a new finance director. All of these things in just one night. So, overlook some of the things that are going on. I know they're difficult, I know you'll get through them, but you're accomplishing magnificent things in a very short period of time for a new council, so I just want to congratulate you, and that's from my heart. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Pat, very much.
In under three minutes.
I'm going to give...
Two minutes and twenty-eight seconds.
I'm going to give Ashley an opportunity as interim almost. Got anything you need to say?
Three minutes.
No, I too will have longer remarks Thursday, but just wanted to commend Pat for his years of service and thank him for everything he's done for the city. I know it has meant a lot to him, and he means a lot to the community, so please attend Thursday, four to six, Portabello, Grand Hall. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Couldn't say three minutes.
Second call to the audience. Pardon? Thursday, wait, are you, do you have a conflict?
Yeah, I'm out of town, sorry.
At this time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing council are asked to provide their name and address and will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at this time. Those not physically present who would like to call may dial six-one-six-nine-three-five-three-two-eight-five. If it continues ringing, please remain on the line until your turn. We will take all callers.
Mayor, city council, thank you. Attorney Laureen Birdsong again. I don't wish to wear out my welcome, you've been very kind and gracious to me. I would like to just add a couple comments about the proposed eight-hundred-fifty-five-square-foot deck, which is of great concern from our standpoint, and it would risk violating, in particular, Restrictions One and Restrictions Three. Restriction One being the use of the rooftop, and Restriction Three, opening itself up to the possibility of rooftop dining violations, which means any consumption of any food or any beverage by anyone. So, I'd like to remind you at your April, I don't know if it was the twenty-fifth or the meeting before that meeting, when Mr. Noto said himself that he intended to use the deck for personal use to write his books, and I would just submit to you that it's very difficult to imagine that with an eight-hundred-fifty-five-square-foot deck and Mr. Noto sitting out there writing his three books, he's not going to have a food or beverage moment. Furthermore, if those sliding doors off the bridal suite, which was originally going to be a residence, are open to that eight-hundred-fifty-five-square-foot deck and guests or users of the bridal suite go out onto the deck, how can we be assured that they are not going to take a beverage or an item of food with them? So, that is part of the concern with the eight-hundred-fifty-five-square-foot deck on this proposed plan, and I don't know how we get around that being a violation as it currently exists in the plan of Restriction Number One and Restriction Number Three, and how that would be policed as to the food and beverage use, which means no food, no beverage consumption by anyone. So, thank you again for your time and your patience with me.
Thank you. Looks like it. Yep, got one.
How are you? I don't usually come to these things, and I don't pay a whole lot of attention, all the stuff going on, a lot of politics all the time. Direction, if I came here more than anything else, is Pat.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Greg Taylor. I live at four-oh-one Lake, and I own a business here in town. Pat, thank you. You know, I've enjoyed our conflicts, I've enjoyed the difficulties. We've not seen eye to eye a number of times, but I'll say one thing for you. You know what you do, you're very good, you're very much of a gentleman, and I thank you tremendously, working with you over the years. I've been doing this with him for sixteen years. I'm extremely pleased that I can call you an associate that I've worked with, so thank you very much. And I have one other thing to say. I have heard, I don't know where things are this way, I don't know if there's any truth to this aspect, is there some consideration that we may do away with the police department and go with the sheriffs? That's what I've been told. As I said, I don't really pay a lot of attention. My interests are purely, pretty much outside the town. I've lived here for thirty-three years, but I let everybody do their thing. But owning a business and living in the town, and what's going on in our society and what's going on in cities around the country, we need to increase our police force, not cut it down. My strong suggestion will be that if you think that it's an issue of cost, and I was told that supposedly it's cheaper if we use sheriffs and get rid of the police department aspect, or, you know, public safety and all that, put it to a vote. Put it on the, on a ballot in November about the whole thing. I don't think this is a choice for the city council to make.
I don't think we're currently discussing that. I mean, unless there are behind-the-scenes...
Oh, well, anyhow, that's what I was told, so that is one reason. All right.
I just want to, I might want to quell that rumor for now, anyway.
Well, thank you, because I think we need to increase what's our force. We used to have at one point in time, if I understood right, that we used to have some of the cadets from the Police Academy in Grand Rapids, true, Pat?
They sometimes, yeah, we have cadets that work for us.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest looking at things like that, because what's going on, I traveled for the last four months, I've been in lots of cities around the country, and it's very discouraging what's going on, the crime and everything else. We need to protect the town as best that we can. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Pat?
Thanks, Greg.
I'm Lori Kelly, eighteen thirteen Doris. I just wanted to apologize for interrupting earlier.
You're okay, Kelly.
I'm just frustrated because I've used Click Fix repeatedly to complain about issues with Nodos. My neighbors have complained, family members have complained. Tony and I have been going back and forth since twenty-eighteen, or since twenty-eighteen when they built that, those tractor pieces are on the beach for four years now, never moved. And we've, you know, we were looking forward to trying to negotiate, they chose not to come to us, they have never reached out to us at all, and I'm disappointed in how the situation is turning out, but I'd love to see the outside cleaned up, and I just wanted to say I was sorry for interrupting.
Thank you.
Doug Vance from Copper Post, one of Washington. Pat, we remember got to know each other very well. As you know, I've been a one-issue resident or non-resident, but I've had enough business experience to know, obviously, you've done an excellent job here at everything else but my parking. And the good news is I've given you a good reason to leave because you're not going to have to listen to me anymore. But along that line, tonight on the consent agenda, you approved the Armory's anniversary party, I have no problem with that, that's great. However, you're going to block off the free parking that my tenants are forced to use because of the three-hour parking thing that goes all the way to November. You know, if you're not going to change anything else, at least change it from, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then it doesn't become a problem. The last time they had that, two of my tenants, I got a call on a Saturday morning, "My car's gone." Two of my tenants had their cars towed because public safety put up this teeny little sign on the center post. They were both out of town with some other friends, their cars were there, they had no chance to move them. The city has their information because they have to apply and get a, and pay for, an overnight parking permit, so they can park there, and that, if you look at the parking map right now, is the part that's designated as not three-hour parking. So, if you're going to do this, please, at least tell public safety, let's not chalk in those cadets, teach them to do something else than chalk tires. I mean, please, just please, you know? Literally, we should not be towing residents' cars that are having problems finding places to park, and now they're parked in what they think is a secure spot. And now they're parked in what they think is a secure spot, and they get their car towed. We obviously need to do something about this. Ashley, that's one of my tenants, I just recently had two tenants move out. One of their big things was, really wanted to be downtown Grand Haven. I don't want to be downtown Grand Haven anymore. This parking situation, I'm constantly having to move my car, pay attention where it is, pay parking tickets. You know, I've had it, you know. That is one of the reasons I'm saying that we don't want Grand Haven to be not-so-Grand Haven. Thank you.
We do have a call, Your Honor.
Go ahead, caller.
Go ahead, caller. If you could state your name and address, please.
Well, my name is Nancy Nixon, 523 Oaks, and I also own property at 20 Crescent Hill in Grand Haven.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question for Karen, who I don't know personally. But I have a question for her. The cottage that she has in Highland Park, I have property there too.
Nancy? Hey, Nancy?
If there is a cottage in Highland Park...
Nancy?
Kind of cottage that you can live...
Nancy, Nancy, yep. I'm going to, I'm going to, this is Kathy McNally, and I'm going to stop you there. I don't think, I don't, we can take comments from you, but we generally don't address, provide answers from the bench.
Nancy, it's Karen. You can call me. I'm on the Highland Park Directory, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. All right.
Got anything else, Nancy?
Anything else, Nancy?
No, no, I just have a question for her, but...
All right, thank, yep, thanks very much.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
No, that's it.
Okay. Okay. One more.
Hello.
Oh, good. Here we go.
Aw, Dad.
I'm Molly McGinnis, 1119 Slaton Avenue. And even though I've lived here in Grand Haven for almost 20 years, and I'm very opinionated, and I probably know more than the average person about municipal government. This is my first time speaking at a council meeting because I was always worried about getting my dad in trouble. As he mentioned earlier, I am a boomerang. I grew up here in town, moved away, and ultimately decided this was where I wanted to settle because it's such an amazing place to live. I just bought my house here in town last summer, and the reason I wanted to come back here is because of the incredible community that Pat McGinnis helped to build. The impact he has had on this city is immeasurable, and I couldn't let his last council meeting here in town go by without stopping to say thank you for bringing me here, for raising me here, and for making this a place that I'm so lucky to call home. Thank you.
Where's your brother?
I don't think, I don't think she's in charge of knowing where the brother is. All right.
You got another caller, Your Honor. Here's Mitch. Hello, caller. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Van Huberg, 1918 Pine Court.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Pat, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for everything you've done for the city. I think you have truly been an asset for the city of Grand Haven, like everybody else. We're going to miss you. Another thing I think most of the community members aren't aware of is how much of an asset your wife, Tina McGinnis, or I should say, your better half, is that for the students that attended Mary A. White Elementary. Tina, I really appreciated everything that you did for the kids. It was obvious that you sincerely loved them. And that was certainly reciprocated by all of the children, including my daughter. Her departure is also a big loss, and wish both of you the best of luck in your next endeavors. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. All right, meeting adjourned.